Good morning once again. Today's meeting is in... Sorry, AG. Today's meeting is a continuation of the Auditor General's report on the public accounts of Ghana ministries, departments and other agencies for the year ended 31st December 2024. We still have about three ministries to conclude this report. It's the Ministry of Justice and Attorney General, the Judicial Service, Ministry of Transport and Ministry of Agric. And so we are here to attend to that report, to see to that report. And then we move to the public board's account, which has to do with the Ministry of Trade. And so since this report pertains to the year 2024, which I was in government, I would hand over the chairmanship for today's proceedings to the ranking member. And I know he will do a very good job. So Honorable Ranking Member, I hand over to you to take over proceedings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam. May we call on Minister of Justice and Attorney General? And can we let them take their oath to tell the truth, please?
Aye. Aye, Dominic Akuru Tengayene.
Swear by the Almighty God.
I swear by the Almighty God.
That evidence I shall give before this committee.
That evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Swear up me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Now, the Attorney General had to take an oath in Parliament. The rest of us, members of the committee, may we introduce ourselves before we go to the Attorney General?
Chairman, my name is Clutch Sedu Dapla, MP for Jirapa, Member of the Committee.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Godfred Sedu Jesau. I'm MP for WA East and a Member of the Committee. Thank you.
Geoffrey Kinney is my name. I represent the good people of Nkantasa and a Member of the Committee.
My name is Frank Yabua, MP for Achuma Mwaviyada North in the Ashanti Region, a Member of the Committee. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Akwesi Kunedu, the Member of Parliament for the Asia North constituency, the Ashanti Region, and a Member of the Committee.
My name is Kwabi Jijaligappa, Member of Parliament for Keta and a Deputy Ranking for the Committee.
Good morning. My name is Samuel Attamills, MP for Commander Edina Igwafo Abrem, the Ranking Member of the Committee and now Presiding.
My name is Abner Osay Asari, Member of Parliament for TY Eastern, Chairperson of the Committee. Today I have my private lecture sitting in front of me.
Honorable Attorney General, could you please introduce yourself and your team?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Ranking Member who is Presiding. My name is Dominic Akuru Tengayene, Attorney General and Minister of Justice. I'm here with my team comprising the Chief Director, Mrs. Fatih Bodua Sedu. And then I have me.
Could you please allow them to introduce themselves?
That's fine, okay.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Fatih Bodua Sedu. I'm the Chief Director. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Josephina Toshiuwa, Financial Controller.
Ernest O'Fair Ayer, Chief State Attorney, Ashanti Region.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Ali Wisi Senu, Administrator, Ashanti Region.
What about the auditors, please?
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Michael Addo, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Good morning. My name is Kudzu Cheme, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Okay. Honorable Minister, your infraction is on paragraph 1865. And Honorable Kunedu Akwesi will take care of that one, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Minister, this infraction happened in the Ashanti Region. And it has to do with three staffs that are separated with the Office of the Attorney General, i.e. Faisa Abdul Salam, that is a senior state attorney, S. Mubarak, Assistant State Attorney, and Shaline Amankwa, she was also an Assistant State Attorney. They separated by verifying them and paid them an amount of 102,000 Ghana cedis. The auditors recommended for a recovery of that amount. We would want to know if that has been done.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My Chief Director will respond to the query.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The amounts have been recovered from all three staffs and paid. And we deposited the receipts with the Office of Attorney General. Sorry, Auditor General, thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm that you've included this with a recommendation of recovery? For the AGs who have been here today, we're thinking that probably it would have been one that he himself would have enforced. But this one, you asked for a recovery. And is it recovered and shown evidence to you? Can you verify same for us?
Honorable Chair, the entire amount has been recovered, even with addition of interest. They also recovered interest in addition to the amount.
Good, Chairman. The recommendation has been adhered to.
Thank you very much, Attorney General. You are discharged. The oral team is waiting for you.
Thank you very much, Chair and Members of the Committee. I'm most grateful.
Thank you. Now let's go Judicial Service, please. Could that clock make sure they take their oath, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That evidence I shall give before this committee.
That evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Swear up me God.
You could please have a seat and then introduce yourselves to the committee.
Good morning, Madam Chair and distinguished members of the Committee. My name is Musa Ahmed. I'm the Judicial Secretary.
Good morning. Respectfully, my name is Justice Srakus Bapuraw. I'm the Deputy Judicial Secretary.
Please speak into the mic. And when you are done with the mic, please turn it off.
Honorable Chair, my name is Niboy Quoti, Director Administration.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Mrs. Veratechi, Director of Finance.
Honorable Chair, my name is Frederick Bedu, Director of Human Resources.
Honorable Chair, my name is Charles Ayden, Deputy Director of Finance.
Honorable Chair, my name is Doris Echonam, Accountant.
Honorable Chair, my name is James Afizi, Regional Accountant, Central Region.
Okay, we'll start from your head office. And infraction is on paragraph 1868. And Honorable Kunedu will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction has to do with some payments that were made by the Judicial Service. And these payments were made on invoices that were not VAT invoices, which the law stipulates that we ought to have VAT receipt for invoices that we make. So the auditors going through your IGF account found that you made payments to the tune of 91,920 Ghana cedis, all of which they were not covered by VAT invoices. And their recommendation was that VAT invoices be recovered on these amounts, failing which the Director of Finance must pay or the Judicial Secretary must recover these amounts and pay. We would want to know, Judicial Secretary, I'm sure you tell us you have VAT invoices to cover or you paid.
Thank you for your question. Madam Chair, I'm happy to inform the Committee that we have complied with the infraction. We have remedied the situation and we have before you the exhibits evidencing the VAT receipts.
Has these receipts been shown to the auditors?
Honorable Chair, the receipts have been shown to the auditors. And we have an amount of 11,783.9, for which the suppliers are here to bring in their VAT invoices.
So for those that were recovered, when were these invoices recovered from the suppliers? That is the over 80,000 that has been recovered. When was these invoices recovered?
We recovered them from the period the audit observation was done up till now. But some of the suppliers, you called them, they don't pay. But we are following up at their premises to get the VAT invoices and attack them for the auditors to look at.
So you said you shown the 80,000 recovered to the auditors, those invoices?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we have done that verification with the auditors.
Auditors, can you confirm the part recovery of these invoices?
Honorable Chair, our last verification, we were able to verify VAT receipts covering an amount of 76,350.88, leaving a balance of 14,939.12.
Madam, Director of Finance, there seems to be some disparity, differentiation between the amount of 11,014.
I think there's discrepancy between our figures. So we need to do a reconciliation with the auditors to agree with the figures that we currently have of 11,783.9 Ghana cedis, Honorable Chair.
Hello, Madam. You guys are the law, isn't that so? Hello?
Yes, we interpret the laws.
You interpret the law?
Made by Parliament, yes, please.
And what does the law say about VAT payments?
Indeed, you are right. Upon the transaction taking effect, the VATs must be issued to evidence payment. Now, what it is is that the situation we have in our system normally allows some of these transaction owners to delay the issuance of the VAT receipt. And in our case, much as we try to do a follow-up.
Sir, I wish you wouldn't make a statement like that because you are being watched by the whole country. You interpret the law. And the law says you need to get the VAT, I mean, payments. VAT payments need to come with receipts. I mean, it's just like if you heard of a policeman stealing, you say, yee. Now here we have the people interpreting the law and they are not following it. Should I get GRI to come after you to get it?
We wish to take a cue from the Committee. And we shall do our homework well at the next sitting of the Committee.
So how many more weeks do you want to have to retrieve these invoices?
We ask for 14 days, please.
14 days?
That is so.
14 days granted. And that's two weeks. Auditors, please take note. Because within 14 days, if they haven't gotten it, they are appearing before the Committee. Because somebody who interprets the law should know what the law is. The next infraction is on paragraph 1873. And Honorable OPK will take care of that one.
Yes, I think it still has to do with some 3,939 withholding tax that you have unremitted. And just like the Chair for the day said, the law resides in your bosom. And we expect that the law is followed. But you failed to submit the tax within the 15 days as stipulated by section 117 of Act 896. Are you able to explain to this Committee what you have done with respect to this infraction?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. With respect to the withholding tax, we are happy to inform you that we have since complied with that. And that the tax has duly been paid to the Ghana Revenue Authority. And we have the evidence to show to the Committee.
Have you showed the evidence to the auditors?
That is so.
Auditors, are you able to confirm?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the taxes have been remitted.
All right. But just to find out from you, what systemic controls have you placed so that these things do not occur? Because 3,900, and you are dragged before the Public Accounts Committee, should not happen again. The law says that within 15 days, remit all taxes to the state. What internal controls have you done at your end to ensure that this thing do not repeat again?
My Finance Director will speak to that question, please. Honorable Chair, we've put in place a second line of check. Normally, our PVs are vetted by internal auditors. But we've put in place another control of check that when the payment vouchers come back from the audit unit, we go through all of them to see if there are any documents missing. And then at the point of payment, before we make payments on the gift miss platform, we also go through the payment voucher to ensure that all documents are in place before we release the money electronically to the supplier. Thank you.
Is the internal auditor, is he here?
Honorable Chair, he's not here.
He's not here?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Because I would wonder why he's still at work and these things are happening. Anyway, the next infraction is on paragraph 1877. Honorable Anxine Mu will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with the untransferred revenue to the holding account to the tune of 15,550. So the auditors revealed that a total amount of 15,550 collected was not transferred to the treasury single account. The auditors recommend that Director of Finance immediately transfers the amount of 15,550 with interest at a prevailing Bank of Ghana rate into the holding account. Has this transfer been done?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, this amount has been transferred into the holding account.
Auditors, can you confirm if this amount has been transferred?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been transferred.
Madam, can you tell the Committee at what point this money was transferred into the treasury account? And what accounted for that delay?
Honorable Chair, the collection banks, that is the Eco Bank, they are responsible for collection of the fees and fines. So at the point that the audit infraction was noticed, we followed up with our NTR unit where they do the rigorous reconciliation. And then later, the letter was sent to them to do the transfer. So it's been done.
What arrangement was in place with the bank? And within the agreement, how many days are they supposed to transfer the money?
Firstly, by the law, within 72 hours, they need to do the transfer. So we've drawn the attention to that going forward.
Was the amount transferred with the interest the auditors recommended?
Honorable Chair, the interest is yet to be transferred.
When was that transfer actually done? And why that delay with the interest? Because that's the recommendation from the auditors, not to just transfer the 15, but then plus the interest.
Honorable Chair, the transfers, the collection was in bits. So the transfers were done between January 2023 to February 2023.
Sir. Have you taken notice of the auditors' infraction? It says June 2022 to December 2023. So then you can't tell us that the transfer was done in January 2023? When the auditors said the duration they are speaking to is from June 2022 to December 2023. So just take your time, go through and come back. But we are speaking to the facts here. And so go through what the auditors have said. It is for 18 months roughly, June 2022 to December 2023. You cannot tell us that the bank did not pay with interest. This is a bank that monthly does reconciliation, charges customers for monthly payments and everything. So that if you keep monies belonging to government or belonging to Judicial Service for 18 months, irrespective of the amount, you are supposed to pay interest. So look at the infraction again and respond appropriately. Because it is from June 2022 to December 2023.
Honorable Chair, well noted. Like I said earlier, the principal amount has been paid. We are going to follow up with the interest and then report to the Committee.
That is not enough. It is not about well noted, the principal amount has been paid. The instructions were that do A, B, C, D. You do A and decide not to do B and you say, well noted, we are going to do it. Respectfully, get it done within the same 14 days that Madam has prescribed that you're going to settle the other one on the VAT receipts. And let the bank pay you what is due for holding your monies for close to 18 months, per the Auditor General's infraction cited in the report.
Honorable Chair, we will comply within the 40 days.
You see, I have a big worry. Judicial Service, you are supposed to interpret the law. And you told us that they need to transfer the money within 72 hours. Isn't that what you said, sir?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
So you know what should be done? And when it wasn't done, what did you do about it?
Honorable Chair, the reconciliation was done.
After 18 months?
No, when the auditors brought to our attention. Because this is coming from a court. So when it was brought to our attention, we also embark on a reconciliation to confirm that. And indeed, the amount as stated by the auditors, we agreed with them. Like I indicated earlier, the principal amount has been paid. And we will do follow up with the interest that as the law requires. Thank you.
So if the external auditors have impromptu you, don't you have any internal systems in place? You said you have an internal auditor. Who could have prompted you on this infraction? You see, you are judicial services. You need to, we make laws, you interpret it for us. The next infraction is on paragraph... The ruling is within 14 days, they should get the interest. It would be interesting, you take judicial services to court. Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph 1881. And it's about unremitted withheld tax of 14,274. How about that one?
Honorable Chair, this has been cleared, and we have also cleared it with the auditors.
And did you clear with the interest or any penalty? Was there any penalty with it?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, no.
I'm sorry?
Respectfully, there was no penalty or interest attached.
What does the law say about withholding of taxes?
Yeah, Honorable Chair, we admit, thus per the audit recommendation, we were supposed to pay the penalty as well. So, Honorable Chair, we'll work on that as well and then...
No, I said, what, the question was, what does the law say about withholding of taxes?
That we are supposed to pay within the fifteen days, Honorable Chair.
Fifteen days?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Auditors, have they paid this amount?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the amount has been remitted to the G R A.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph eighteen eighty-four. And Honorable Frank Abor will take care of that one.
This one relates to a similar issue, unremitted withheld taxes, amounting to six thousand two hundred and forty-six. Have you done the needful?
Honorable Chair, we have done the needful as recommended by the auditors.
Auditors, can you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the entire amount has been paid to the G R A.
The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen eighty-seven, also unremitted revenue to the consolidated fund of forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy. Has this amount been paid?
Yeah, Honorable Chair, it has been paid into the consolidated fund.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, our last verification, it was still outstanding. So if there has been any transfer and they have the documents, they can provide them.
Ah, the auditor is saying they still outstanding?
Honorable Chair, we have the exhibits from Ghana Commercial Bank as having been paid.
When did you get that?
In the infractions, it was on the, the statements was from January to August twenty twenty-five. Through the reporting time, we got it on the twenty-sixth of August twenty twenty-five, Honorable Chair.
Now, twenty-sixth of August, you didn't give it to the auditors?
Honorable Chair, I think it escaped just...
I'm sorry?
By the district auditor.
District auditor.
So I think there was a miscommunication. So we'll forward it to the auditors for them to verify.
Okay, auditors, please follow up on that one for us.
Well noted, Honorable Chair.
The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen ninety-one. And Honorable Dr. Jassau will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, this infraction was observed in Central Region at the Kasua District Court. It has to do with payroll audits and what the outcome was. Honorable Chair, one sefas stam, gani, vacated post on the twenty-first of July twenty twenty-three. He was however validated and paid an amount of eight thousand and sixty-four Ghana cedis. This is an unearned salary for August twenty twenty-three. Where the infraction took place, to give us an answer.
Okay. Respectfully, Honorable Chair, the sum amount of eight thousand and sixty-four Ghana cedis, we've been able to retrieve four thousand from the said former staff. And we are still working on getting the remainder. Thank you.
So if I understood you, out of the eight thousand and sixty-four Ghana cedis, you were able to retrieve how much and what is left?
So currently, we have retrieved four thousand and remaining four thousand and sixty-four Ghana cedis.
When did you retrieve this amount? And where is the amount?
Okay, so the four thousand Ghana cedis was retrieved on the... It was paid on twenty-second October twenty twenty-five. Yes, and the amount has been paid to the B O G.
So you paid it only last week?
Very well.
So what is the problem? Why have you not recovered the full amount with interest?
Honorable Chair, the former staff in question, that were struggling to get him. So we have to involve the police. Yes, and when he was apprehended by the police, his family members came on board to make that initial deposit. In fact, the four thousand was made in trenches, two thousand, and then later they also brought the two thousand. They promised us that we are going to pay the rest before end of November.
So family members came in and then it courted your leniency, right? That attracted leniency from you to allow this flexibility, is that correct?
No. In fact, that four thousand Ghana cedis that he paid, it was as a result of we being had on, even we have to involve the police. That's how we were able to, because we cannot trace the former staff in question. So the registrar had to go and then, in order to get the staff.
All right. So we'll come back to the registrar and what he should do or he should have done to retrieve the full amount for the state. Who validated this worker? I want a name and a position. Who validated this worker?
Honorable Chair, validation is done at the registry. And in this particular one, I think the registrar was the validator.
Madam Chair, respectfully, I will request the witness to answer the questions directly, as if he were in a court, because you have the powers of a high court. Now, who registered, who validated the said worker? You know the person. Can you give that information to the committee, please?
Honorable Chair, the validator is Mr. Smiler Adams.
Please, can you add some further information? Who is Mr. Smiler Adams? Is he here?
He is the cashier of the court.
And he validates or he validated this specific one?
He validated this specific one.
Are you able to tell the committee how a cashier of a district court will validate a worker? Is that your practice there?
Honorable Chair, the validation is done by the cashier of the court and the registrar. You know, the cashier will have to validate and registrar will forward. The registrar will have to approve of it. That was why he was trying to remember the name of the registrar. I think he is Al Grob, but he forgot the first name. So it's the registrar and the cashier who do the validation for each of the courts.
So it means that the cashier is the one who occasioned this infraction? Because the worker was not there, and yet he went ahead to validate. The registrar, without due diligence, also confirmed that validation and therefore the worker was paid. Will you agree that both the cashier and the registrar was negligent in this duty?
Honorable Chair, the two of them caused the...
So, Honorable Chair, I will defer to you. The witness has established how it occurred and what we should do. We need, we need the state to get back its money with interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The registrar, those two people who validated that person, will have to pay this amount. And you have thirty days to do that. Thank you very much.
Noted.
Let's move to the next infraction. It's on paragraph eighteen ninety-five. And Honorable Gape will take care of that one.
Thank you. Judicial Service, this one is related to High Court Kasua Fankor. It is basically about an earned salary where a deputy chief registrar proceeded on annual leave, proceeded on one year leave without pay, but it was still validated and being paid. And then the recommendation was the registrar should recover the amount of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-seven Ghana cedis with interest at a prevailing Bank of Ghana rate. I would like to find out from you whether you have done the needful.
Honorable Chair, payment has been made into the Auditor General's required free account.
With interest?
Honorable Chair, without interest.
Then you need to pay the interest because that was the recommendation from the Auditor General. Oh, the General, can you confirm?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so the amount of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-seven has been recovered as of twenty-first August twenty twenty-five, but the balance, the interest is still outstanding.
Why, why is it outstanding?
Honorable Chair, they may have to explain to us, but yeah.
You should explain the reason why they are not paying the interest.
Honorable Chair, we'll follow up with the payments of the interest and get it done.
Chair, we are your...
Thank you very much. Judicial Service, you pay the interest within thirty days. I'm surprised Judicial Service is not. They can interpret the law, but they don't want to follow it. The next one is on paragraph eighteen ninety-eight. And Honorable Kinney will take care of that one, please. Okay, it's on Judicial Service Cape Coast, an unsupported payments of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty. How about that one?
Honorable Chair, the payment vouchers have been retrieved.
Madam, please speak into the mic.
The payment vouchers have been retrieved and the district auditor has done the verification. And we have the payment vouchers here for the Auditor General to...
Have they seen the documents yet?
The district auditor for Central Region, Cape Coast, has done the validation, because that's where the report came from.
Yes.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And Cape Coast, you are here, right? Then answer it, sir.
Honorable Chair, yes, we've been cleared from the Cape Coast district.
My question, have all these amounts been, have you recovered all these documents?
Yes, yes, Honorable Chair.
Can the Auditor General confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, the relevant documents were submitted and verified.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen oh one. And it's on unpresented payment vouchers of nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. What has happened to these documents?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, this has also been cleared with the auditors.
They've been cleared with the auditors? And this is also from Cape Coast, right? We seem to have some, something going on in Cape Coast Judicial Service out there. Sir, please, don't smile on this one. It doesn't look good. Auditors, have they presented the documents?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the PVs were presented and verified.
The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen oh five. And Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on unretired interest. Regulation one oh two of the Public Financial Management Regulation says that a spending officer, after issuing an impress, has to recover or retire the money within ten days. Here, in contravention to this regulation, it was observed that the Deputy Regional Administrative Officer of the Court was granted an amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eleven Ghana cedis to perform some various activities in the House Station Courts. The auditors observed that those activities were performed, but the money, as the law stipulates, was not retired. And this is in contravention to the regulation. So auditors met the management and management told the auditors that they have identified the documents that are supporting those payments. Upon a second check, it proved that the documents were not there. They were lying to the audit service. We are guarded by law in this country. We know the criminal offenses act another related act, the law that governs it, Act nine one nine six zero. When you make a false declaration, the consequences. So why did you give a false information to the audit service? Honorable Chair, the amount has been fully retired and it has been cleared from the district court, district auditor, Cape Coast. Thank you. We'll come to that. The auditors are saying, upon a second check, the documents supporting the payment were not there. This is what the report says. So it means in the first instance, you gave them a false information. And we know the consequences when you make a false declaration, per the loss of the country. So why that falsehood? Before we come to the verification.
Honorable Chair, I think it was an omission.
Okay, auditors, that they have now submitted the documents to validate whatever, is it true?
Yes, Honorable Chair, our last verification in August this year, they provided the documents to retire the impressed.
Thank you. But I have some reservation. When it comes to the judicial service, we know the role you play when it comes to legality. I don't think a reputable... Uh, I don't think a reputable institution like the judicial service should be caught with some of these petty, petty, petty offenses. So what are we telling the others? Hmm? If somebody appeared before you were caught and is caught by this, how will you treat the person?
Sir, um, you said it was an omission. What did you omit?
Honorable Chair, uh, it, it may be as a result of what they were presenting, the, uh, the document.
It may be. You see, you are not too sure of what you are saying, but you've sworn an oath to speak the truth and nothing but the truth.
Uh, that is, uh, at that time.
You have sworn an oath to speak the truth and nothing but the truth. If you are not sure of what you are saying, you are better off keeping quiet and allowing your superiors to answer. But you cannot tell us that it was an omission. It may be an omission. Omission of what? Omission of the statements, omission of what? Of the truth? You failed to tell them the truth. You omitted the truth. Is that what you are saying? Respectfully, let, let's try as much as possible to take the auditors serious. You tell the auditors, you submit documentation to them to prove what they are asking, only for them to come out later and realize that this is not it. And we tell you, say, oh, it, it, it may be an omission.
Or, or have the auditors verif-? They have verified it. Now you see why I, uh, I told you earlier that you shouldn't be smiling because it doesn't smell good at Judicial Services in Cape Coast. Let's go to the next one, please. It's on, uh, the next infraction is on paragraph nineteen ten. And, uh, Honorable, uh, DePaula will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. This, uh, infraction has to do with three staff of the judicial service. It has to do with on-earned salary of forty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five Ghana cedis. Three staff of the service of your organization vacated post between August twenty twenty-three and February twenty twenty-four and yet were collecting salary. The three, uh, I want to mention their names wherever they are. We have Apraku Michelle Owusuwa. She earned thirty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-five Ghana cedis. Then Asante Kinsley Granting, five thousand five hundred, then Evans Edusey, some one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight Ghana cedis. The auditors said that the administrative officer and the accountant should recover the money. I want to find out whether the money has been recovered.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. For, uh, Apraku Michelle Owusuwa, the earned salary upon reconciliation with the auditors was ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight point seven four. And this has been paid into the Auditor General's recovery accounts. Asante Kinsley Granting, he did not receive any salary after vacation of post was issued. So his pay slip and bank statement was given to the auditors for verification. Evans Edusey has also paid the thousand three hundred and twenty Ghana cedis into the Auditor General's recovery account. Thank you.
Can the auditors confirm this? Honorable Chair, we cannot confirm this because per the last status that I received from the Sunyani office, the information given wasn't given to me. It was still outstanding.
Uh, when was your last, um, uh, check up on it?
That was in August.
Madam.
Honorable Chair, our regional administrative officer and the regional accountant send this verification to us with the district auditor.
The, the, what, your response? Your response to this infraction, do you have the proof? Do you have any proof to what you are saying?
We have evidence of that.
Okay. You can give it to the audit. So you can give copies to the auditors for them to confirm to us. Chairman, I'm done.
All right, thank you very much, um, Judicial Services, you are discharged. Let's call Ministry of Trade.
Judicial Service, uh, I think next time when the auditors come to your end, let the people at the top spend good quality time with them. Because some of these infractions that you were cited for are infractions that should never come here. So moving forward, um, Judicial Secretary, I would ask that whenever the auditors come, please let's spend some good time with them and try as much as possible, um, to, to clear some of these things before they even appear in your management letter. Thank you.
Thank you for this advice. It's well noted.
Uh, can they take the oath, please? Uh, can this swear the ministry in with the agencies, please? Because we have our Ghana Trade Fair Company, Ghana Standards Authority, uh, Ghana Enterprises Agency and Ghana Supply Company Limited.
Hi.
Hi.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Senior Deputy Minister, you are welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can, can you please introduce yourself to the committee?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, my name is Honorable Samsonahi. I'm P for Bodhi and Deputy Minister for Trade, Agribusiness and Industry. My colleagues will introduce themselves.
Honorable Chair, my name is Noah Tumfo, Chief Director, Ministry of Trade, Agribusiness and Industry.
Honorable Chair, my name is Franklin Quissy Andrews, Director of Finance and Admin for Ghana Trade Fair Company Limited.
Honorable Chair, respectfully, my name is Augustini Amwanai, Esquah, Deputy Chief Executive Officer, Ghana Trade Fair Company.
Honorable Chair, my name is Professor George Eji, Acting Director General, Ghana Standards Authority.
Honorable Chair, my name is Samuel Sakiti, Director of Finance, Ghana Standards Authority.
Honorable Chair, my name is Bafo Ikufuankama, Director of Finance, Ghana Enterprises Agency.
Honorable Chair, my name is Emo Damiyentri, Acting Director, He-Man Resources.
Honorable Chair, my name is Sidrus Dambanhebo-Mamo, Deputy CEO, Ghana Enterprises Agency.
Honorable Chair, my name is Samuel Jabaniti, Deputy Director General in Charge of General Services for Ghana Standards Authority.
Honorable Chair, I'm Dr. Al Muhammad, Deputy Director General, Ghana Standards Authority.
Okay, Honorable Minister, the first one is for Ghana Enterprises, uh, the Ghana Enterprise Agency, are they here? Okay, um. Oh, okay, um, thank you, madam. We are looking at Ghana Enterprise Agency, their financial, uh, statement, performance. What? Uh, when it comes to your, um, financial statement from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, you increase your income by seventy-five percent. By the same time, your expenditure also increased by seventy-four point five percent. Why?
Honorable Chair, yes, uh, the reason being that most of the funds that are received at Ghana Enterprises Agency are from collaborating partners. And these funds, when they are received, are meant for some specific activities. For twenty twenty-three, there were, uh, a lot of, uh, monies that came for grants which were given out to, uh, the MSMEs as grants and some money also came in for startup kits. So those startup kits were procured and given out to the MSMEs as startup kits. So that is the reason why, uh, the monies that came in, uh, the money that went out was just about the money that came in.
Yeah, I see that, uh, on the grants, you had about two hundred and eighty-four million, uh, in twenty twenty-three as opposed to twenty twenty-two when you had hundred and fifty-three million. So the difference was about hundred and thirty million, uh, on the grants that you got. But then when it comes to the expenditure, the expenses, uh, went up by forty-three, uh, million as opposed to, uh, in twenty twenty-three as opposed to that of twenty twenty-two. What about consumption of, uh, fixed assets?
Con- consumption of fixed assets is purposely the depreciation that are charged on, uh, PP, the, uh, property plants and equipment.
In one year, it went up to two point three million.
Mr. Chair, in twenty twenty-three, there were a lot of, uh, procurement respect to, uh, vehicles because of the projects that came on board, uh, for, for instance, the Ghana Economic Transformation Project, the Ghana Jobs and Skills Project and that of Masa Card Foundation. There were some vehicles that were procured and other plans that were procured. So that actually resulted in the increase in the consumption of fixed asset.
You see your, um, current assets, it went from nine million to three hundred and three million. That's your non-current assets. But current assets went down. What caused that?
Honorable Chair, I, I earlier indicated, sorry, I earlier indicated the non-current asset is, uh, basically the PP, the, uh, the, uh, plant, uh, property plant and equipment. So that went up in the year twenty twenty-three.
Now your position on current ratio, it declined to one to one to, uh, to one. Huge, uh, difference right there. What happened and what are you going to do to recover?
Honorable Chair, uh, the issue in twenty twenty-three was basically, uh, the agency moving on to use full, uh, accrual where the funds, part of the funds that were received from the collaborating partners, which are not being utilized, are deferred. When it's being deferred, it is pushed into the current liabilities. So this pushed the current liabilities up and that actually affected the current ratio.
Um, can you come again, please?
I'm saying that, uh, under twenty twenty-three, the EBSAs, the remaining funds under the collaborating partner, the monies that came in which were not utilized, that portion of that money was deferred. When we defer it, that goes under the current liability and this wells up the.
Monies that you did not utilize now turns into a liability?
The monies, sorry, the monies, the monies that were received, you receive it from a partner. So if you are not utilized, if that money is not utilized, you cannot realize that's earned. So that money becomes a liability to the agency. So twenty twenty-three, the previous, the subsequent year, when that monies are being used, you release it as, uh, revenue when it comes in.
You put the money in the current liabilities column because you were not able to use it. And then in twenty, in the ensuing year, you release it back. How, how, so how do you treat it?
So that portion, now you credit the revenue, then you debit the liability. So the revenue now goes up, then the liability portion in the current liability will go down.
Auditors, can you confirm this treatment?
Honorable Chair, that is it. Because you are preparing the accounts under EBSAs accruals, um, the money does not belong to them. So it has to be treated in the account as a liability. So in the ensuing years, they release it, the liability will be going down and then the revenue will be going up and then the expenses will, you know, take on. So that is how the treatment is done, which is acceptable.
So in twenty twenty-four, I would see, um, monies of close to two hundred million. Because when you do the difference, about two hundred million Ghana cedis coming in as income, pay your treatment.
Rightly so, Honorable, Honorable Chair.
Rightly so. Today is the twenty-seventh of October, twenty twenty-four. Rightly so. We'll take notes of that and when the accounts for twenty twenty-four comes, we will look at that. But, um, uh, Mr. Chair, I just want clarification on something that I am seeing here. I see under the expenditure, different components. I see under the expenditure, different components of expenses. I see specialized expenses and I see other expenses. Current chair asked you why the increase in expenditure? And you said you used it for, usually when the funds come in, they are directed for specific purposes. Was that captured under goods and services? You give me the explanation of the various expenses, the specialized, and then the other expenses. And I'm also asking whether that expenditure that saw you increasing the amount by close to seventy-four point five percent was captured under goods and services?
Honorable Chair, under expenses, yes, the goods and service, amount of 199244964.396, sorry, 93. Under goods and service, some of the expenditures were material and office consumables, utilities, general cleaning, rentals and leases, travel and transport, consultancy, training and seminars.
So stop right there. But when he asked you, you said that the total income that increased by seventy-five and the expenditure that came with it was usually to pay or to, to address expenses of a particular program. But here you are telling us that it's for office consumables. It's for this, it's for that, it's for utilities. So then it did not go to address that specific payment of grants to people and all the other things that you mentioned? Because the auditors were specific that you saw your income go up by seventy-five percent and your expenditure also go up by seventy-four percent. And gladly you told us that, oh, yes, it was to, I mean, take care of a program that that income had provided. But here we are, your goods and services is speaking to something directly different from that. And then you come to the specialized expenses and other expenses. Tell us what exactly they are.
Their specialized expense was, one was rent and the other one was impairment.
Didn't you pay any rent in 2022? Because the specialized expenses is zero for 2022, but two point three million in 2023.
Yes, in 2022, the rent component was paid directly under the Ghana Economic Transformation Project from Ministry of Finance. But in 2023, we have to pay from our end. The reason why in our financial, we don't have the rent in it.
Under goods and services, you mentioned lease also over there.
Yes.
So so if there's a lease and then there's a rent, which one are we talking about? What, what is the lease for?
Normally, the lease, I want to look at it, but normally the lease is for the equipment that, for the copiers that we lease for the activities of the agency.
You see, when it comes to 2022, you had a deficit of six point four million. And then 2023, a deficit of nine point five million. So which direction are we going?
Honorable Chair, in this deficit, basically, as a result of the change, I mean, the movement from the cash or partially cash basis to that of accrual. Because other than cash, when funds are received like from a partner, we recognize everything as revenue for the year. But with this new, the IPSS, now we have to defer portion of the funds that are not being used. So it is pushed under the current liability. Then previously, subsequently when it's used, then we realize, we recognize it.
When did you start with the IPSS?
Oh, 20, fully 2023.
Now, when I asked you earlier about grants, which resulted in seventy-five percent increase in your revenue, you say you used it for projects. But now that we are talking about the expenses, not all of it was used for projects. What portion of it did you use for projects?
Oh, Mr., Mr. Chair, I, I don't have that information here. But I don't have that information here. But the monies that are being used under the collaborating, under the collaborating partner funds, these monies go under the expenses. So that is why initially I mentioned that it's for those projects.
So your current ratio right now is artificial?
No, 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 it's, it's correct.
Because you go from six hundred and nine point four to one to one point six to one?
Yes, it is because of the, the change.
And then definition for the other expenses, please. You've given us that of the specialized expenses. And in your goods and services numbers, if clearly your projects are paid under goods and services, you should have an item or two showing that. And you have the list in front of you. You have the breakdown.
But I'm sorry, if, if you can ask the question.
I asked for the definition of, of what you term specialized expenses, other expenses, and then goods and services. And so you gave us what you termed other expenses as rent. Sorry, specialized expenses as, as rent. And I'm saying, give me a breakdown of the other expenses, what it entails.
Honorable Chair, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure the, the auditors might have put some figures together because if you look at my financial statement, financial statement, under expenses, I have compensation, I have goods and service, I have specialized expenses, I have grants, then consumption of fixed asset, so...
There's, there's no line item called other expenses?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have that one here.
And that is seventy-seven million. So you have the specialized expenses as two point three, your goods and services as 199.7 million Ghana cedis, and then the other expenses. So anything found outside the specialized expenses and goods and services will be the other expenses. So then let us know what the others entail. Anything that falls outside specialized expenses, which you've explained to us, the goods and services, which you have also done. And so all the others, I am sure will constitute other expenses. So if, so you can translate that for us.
Honorable, Honorable Chair, from my financial, I have grants standing alone as item thirty-eight, which is the seventy-seven eight one seven six four six point eight four.
Uh huh, so this is going to buttress what you told us, that some monies came in and then you used it for a project. The grant is a project. So that is why we're asking you to let us know which projects did you spend this money on? So then the other expenses goes to the grants that were given out for the incomes, the specialized incomes that came in?
Yes, grants.
Okay.
But as part of the, possibly we are, as part of the goods and service, we have consultancy expenses, which is basically the consultants that were engaged under the projects. The Ghana Economic Transformation Project, the Ghana Jobs and Skills Project. So the payment falls under their project, but it was captured under goods and service.
I, I, I get that. So then, now I know that the other expenses had to do with grants that were given. It's always important to, usually when you just see other expenses, seventy-seven million, you should go further to find out exactly what it is because I know they are goods and services, which speaks to expenses, the regular expenses. And then in here, you have specialized expenses and then other expenses. That's why I wanted to prove further, to find out exactly what the other expenses entail. And now it's been confirmed that you used that to pay grants.
Okay, now, oh, yes, sir.
Chairman, thank you very much. One quick observation. If you look on your income side, the first line item there, you find a non-tax revenue. In the, in the financials, you find non-tax revenue. There was, there seems to be a sharp decline in that. That is about forty percent. What constitutes that? And does that have any effect once it starts declining that way on the operations that you do?
Honorable, Honorable Chair, the non-tax revenue is a composition of, is a composition of goods and service and, and foreign, foreign exchange gain. Yeah, yes.
And that seems to be declining. The gains you make from foreign exchange seems to be declining because it declined by forty-one percent between 2022 and 2023.
Honorable Chair, it's, it's dependent on the foreign currency that you will receive, yeah.
Okay, now let's move to the management issues. And this on paragraph twelve seventy-five. Honorable, Honorable Gappel will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infractions is basically failure to save bond after steady leave with me. And then the auditors have recommended that an amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-four be paid into Auditor General's recovery account with interest. Can I please know the status of this infraction?
Honorable Chair, I said now, an amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine Ghana cedis has been paid with outstanding of nine thousand four eight four point eight zero.
Auditors, can you please confirm such amount?
Honorable Chair, an amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine has been recovered, leaving a balance of nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four point eight zero, as he indicated. Thank you.
So when is the rest being paid? When are you paying the rest? Is Samira in the country? Is she in the country?
No.
When are you paying the rest of the money?
Honorable Chair, Samira is not in the country. But we are still following up to retrieve the...
Method did you use to retrieve the thirty-two thousand plus?
We wrote follow-up, follow-up letters to her and then we were constantly calling her on phone and then giving her reminders officially. So that prompted her to come and pay. But we are still using the same method to retrieve the nine thousand.
Just, just so we are informed and we get to understand how to handle this matters in future. In the, in the response you gave to the auditors, you made claim that you wrote to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, the ministry directed that you engage the NIB authorities. Did you do that? And is it that which triggered Samira to pay back the money? We want to understand the method that you used in doing that because we get this infractions a lot.
Honorable Chair, yes, that rightly so. We initially went, when we realized that she was not in the country, we went to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, if we can get assistance. But they referred us to NIB. So they, there was a, we had a meeting with her lawyers and then they agreed to pay that amount. But they were, wanted to pay for one year. But the auditors required, they indicated that he's supposed to pay forty-two thousand, which we are still following up for her to pay.
Mr. Chair, but keep on following up and then let's see how it goes. But I don't know why we are doing this to Madagana. If government spend resources on you to pay, I mean, you're on, you're on steady leave. Save bond is become an issue and then they leave. Why are we doing this to Madagana?
Does she have any guarantees?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And what role are they playing in the recovery of this amount?
Honorable Chair, we got into contact with them. So I think without standing, we'll still get in touch with them for them to support us to pay.
Okay.
Madam, you, you seem to be complicating the matter. We are happy that there, there's been some recoveries. Are there timelines? We need full payment at that time. Because once you are in contact with the, you've spoken to the lawyers, there's some commitment coming from. Are there timelines? What is it that we have agreed with Samira Hussein to be paying, I mean, this debt? We want to understand that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think in respect of recovering the remaining a little of nine thousand, the lawyers we have spoken to on behalf of Ms. Samira, they are giving the indication that from their side, they think they've paid up to a certain point. So we should give them some time to reconcile with their payment receipt and get back to rest. And as recent as, I think, Thursday or so, we wrote a letter back to Ms. Samira through her lawyers. We are yet to get a definite response.
Ms. Samira, if you are hearing us, even legal fees alone is more than the nine thousand. Your name should not be appearing in audit reports. So please kindly do the niffo. Japan money is plenty. Come and pay this money so that we are all free. Thank you.
You said you got in touch with the lawyers when?
Okay, so that was Thursday, the last time we got, last week, Thursday.
Okay. We need for you to follow up and keep the auditors updated on this. Because at some point, we'll have to draw the curtain and collect the money from one of you. It's just that simple. Okay. Ghana Enterprises Agency, you are done. The next one is Ghana Trade Fair Company. Are you here? Okay, Honorable Abana Osaya, sorry, we'll, we'll take care of that. But trade fair, we have an issue from five years back. Five years back. We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, thank you. So let's, let's go to your income and expenditure. And then I see a huge increment of forty million from a million. In 2022, your revenue was one point one million and in 2023, forty-one million. Can you tell us what necessitated that huge revenue? We all want revenue, but yes, we want to find out exactly how you came by the forty million increment.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This was an amount one of the developers, as we are aware, three fairs undergoing redevelopment. And we have developers on site who are together supporting us in carrying out the redevelopment. So one of them was, the contract agreement we had with the contractor, he was supposed to remit some money to us, which have been, which we have agreed with them to pay in tranches. So the first tranche was... So the first tranche was supposed to have come in twenty twenty three, in the second quarter. So that was what caused the sharp increment in the revenue.
And what was this bit of revenue paid for?
It was meant for us to, for them to, it's actually a tech company. They are supposed to put in a IT infrastructure into the project. And as part of the agreement with them, they are supposed to pay us this amount. So the first tranche of it is what we received and it ballooned the revenue up as we can, we see.
So has this been done? Have you put the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure in place to the tune of the amounts paid you?
No, Honorable Chair, we are not supposed to do that. We are supposed to, they are supposed to pay us the money. Then they put the IT infrastructure into the developer. So when the lot is handed over to the developer, it's part of the commitment and the leasehold sum that is supposed to come to us.
So so who are supposed to, who are those supposed to put in the infrastructure?
The infrastructure is supposed to be, is the developer is the one who is supposed to do the I A D C, Africa Data Center.
Okay, so they have paid forty million. So the forty million was for what?
That was the first installment of their contract sum.
First installment of their contracts and what contract?
Honorable, the contract we had with them, we are supposed to allocate to them, I think five point five acres of land on lease. Yes, so this money is the first tranche of the leasehold payment.
Because you said something different. You said it was for infrastructure. I'm asking you, after taking the forty million, have you done the infrastructure? But they are now saying that it is for, the first tranche was for the leasehold payment to give them access to the place to put in the infrastructure.
Exactly.
So let's let's be coherent in this. And then since you got the money, you had other incomes coming in. So for twenty twenty three, your total income was forty five point nine million Ghana cedis. And then I saw your direct expenses, operating expenses go up by a hundred percent. Yeah.
Yes.
Actually more than that, but I'm being, yeah.
Yes, rightly so. As the development was going on, we were also not reneging or sitting down without carrying out our mandate.
So what exactly were you doing? That caused your operating expenses to move by a hundred percent?
Honorable, we were still.
Now of the direct operating expenses.
We have a printing and stationery, which was twenty two thousand. We had publicity and adverts. That is always the chunk of our expenditure as far as organization of exhibition is concerned. That was two hundred and forty two thousand four hundred and thirty two Ghana cedis. Then we also have transport and travels, twenty five thousand six hundred and fifteen. Then we have security expenses, forty eight thousand six hundred and fifty. We have communication expenses, thirty five thousand six hundred and forty. Then we have entertainment and protocol expenses, that is eighty seven thousand. But the entertainment is entertainment, music and protocol expenses. Then we have fuel and lubricant, twenty eight thousand seven hundred and forty six. Cleaning and sanitation, forty thousand two hundred cedis. Then press allowance, forty three thousand. Then we have public relation expenses, twenty thousand eight hundred Ghana cedis. We also have staff fair allowances or honorarium, that is thirty four thousand.
So I'm saying clearly it tells you that you've seen money, you are spending money. Yes, because the items you mentioned, you have advertising and and then you have press allowance, you have communication allowance, you have. So you have you have seen some money. And so your your expenses should go up because this is different from your administrative expenses. This is also different from your staff expenses. And we saw your staff expenses also moving by, the auditors have put here quite a huge amount of money, from five hundred and eighty two thousand to one point one million Ghana cedis. So is it not a case of I've seen money, so let me also spend some?
Sorry, Honorable Chair, that is not so. It's about the number of events we organize and the anticipated expenses that it comes with.
So for every event that your staff organizes, you give them money, you pay them for that. Because I I see your staff expenses went up from five hundred and eighty two thousand Ghana cedis to one point one million Ghana cedis. Unless you want to tell me as soon as you saw the money, you hide more staff.
Yes, some, we 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 got additional staff.
Okay, so in twenty twenty two, what was your what was your staff strength and then in twenty twenty three?
Honorable, in twenty twenty two, we were just six.
Twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three, our number went up to thirteen.
To thirteen?
Yes.
Six to thirteen warrants and more than a hundred percent increment in salaries. That's okay, ended there. So we move to your total expenditure. When you made an income of one point one million, your total expenditure was two point six million. And when you made an income of forty five, it also increased to three point six million. So it tells you, you see money, you spend money. Because you haven't been able to tell me exactly what, when I ask you to mention the direct operating expenses, the items you mentioned are not anything extraordinary that should warrant an increment. But that is how you feel you should run the public boards and so. I also see under the same income and expenditure taxation amount of ten million, ten point two million Ghana cedis. Can you explain to us?
It was tax provision for the year twenty twenty three. Having realized this income in, after preparing the financial statement, that was the tax liability on us as corporate.
Isn't that too too huge an amount? You you realize an income of forty percent and then you pay twenty five percent on that? Is that is that what it is?
Yes, Honorable.
Is this actual or is just provision for tax?
It was provision.
So what was the actual?
The actual was just a little after nine, nine million.
So I mean, yes, on the whole, the money brought in some improvement in your currency ratio, but that is, that is to be expected. But at the rate at which you are going, if you see more money and you increase your expenses, it will not serve this public board any good. We want to see tangible expenses that can also raise money. We are not saying don't spend, but what we are saying is that whatever you spend on should be able to raise more money for your your company. That's, I think that's it.
What was the 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 current status of the construction that is ongoing at your end in terms of percentage?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, we have the horizontal works. And when I talk about horizontal works, I mean the drainage systems and the streets. It is about eighty five percent complete. And then we have our flagship program, which is the multi-purpose exhibition center, which is also about forty five to fifty percent through. It is expected that by the next eight months it will be completed. Thank you very much.
And it's purely donor fund, it's a grant loan facility or is G O G?
Honorable Chair, no, it's not. It's a PPP arrangement. So we have a developer who is constructing that for the company and in turn who swap land on lease for him to also develop to recoup.
That's how come you get monies in your account and you spend. And what type of entertainment? You've mentioned entertainment. Is it Adoua or Kete? Or, I mean, we want to understand what entertainment?
Thank you, Honorable. When we organize events, we are supposed to have music provided. We bring in artists, we engage DJs to. Then we also have the cultural beat also there to make the place exciting, to attract the general public, to visit the fairgrounds for the exhibitors to also make some sales.
But the trade fair that is under construction, you still hold Adoua exhibitions?
Honorable, what we do is we look out, we go out to organize events from a high venue.
A high venue?
Yes, for Westus, for instance, for the past three years, we've been organizing grants since the, the last time we were at the Ghana International Mall on, at Ableja, we were there. On twenty first of September every year, we organize Osajifu Made in Ghana Fair at the Kwame Kuma Memorial Park. And last year, we ran two of them concurrently in Kumasi and here. This year, we also organized either other grants, both in Kumasi and in Accra. So it's not like we have not been working. Now, mandate, we still go out and carried it out.
So is it a place such that you can't hold events there?
No.
At all?
Yes, it's a construction site now.
And you're, I'm told you are, is it a custod-? Yes. Yes, yeah, he said that. He said it should be about forty five percent complete in eight months, eight to nine months. But still, there's there's not much we can do with a forty five percent completion project.
My lady, respect, Honorable Chair, respectfully, I indicated that it is about.
Did you just refer to us your lady?
Because of my legal background, we run, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I did indicate that it is between forty five to fifty percent complete. And we've had a schedule with the contractor and within the next eight months it will be completed, respectfully submitted.
So hopefully next year, God willing, we should have a functioning trade fair. You know, I miss I miss those days, trade fair.
What we have currently, my Honorable Chair, respectfully, it is a ten thousand capacity exhibition center, which is multi-purpose. So you can be assured that in the next eight months it will be completed so that we can have one or two fairs, but not the grand one because other projects would be ongoing. Thank you very much.
So how many developers do you have outside?
Currently, we have two. We are expecting the next one to come. That is the A D C, the one to construct the technology hub. And others would follow respectfully.
When you are signing the contract, how many years did you include that in the contract up to today?
Respectfully, we have a maximum of thirty six months.
The thirty six months, from which year to which year?
That is left to the director F and A to answer. I wasn't there.
Okay, one one last thing too. So you said two developers, so the rest of your property or your landed property, what has become of it or what are you going to use it for?
Respectfully, Honorable Chair, you can be assured that there are so many other contracts which are under review because we've not come out with the necessary, you know, finality. We are unable to speak to that. It is currently before the ministry to assist us review it. So once it is done, we are able to give you a concrete.
But by now, you should you should be able to tell us that you have five point five acres. You are using two acres for this, three acres for, one acre for your sports complex, the other acre for this or that. But you you shouldn't tell us, after you have given to developers part of the land, you are now telling us that the document is with the ministry, the ministry is reviewing the whole thing.
Honorable Chair.
Yes, you you should, unless you don't want to tell us. But you should be able to tell us that with your five point five acres, you are using, you've given, I mean, a part out, the next acre is for this, the other acre is for that. But but you after giving two out, what if you use it for something that the developers who have already committed to say, I I don't want this in my space?
My lady, respectfully, oh, sorry.
I'm not your lady, please.
Honorable Chair, the legal background is always a problem. Pardon me, Honorable Chair.
I I thought that was your custodian background instead.
Yes, of course. Once a custodian, always a custodian. Thank you very much, honorable member. Honorable Chair, so when it comes to the flagship program, which is costing not less than forty million dollars, the agreement, as in the consideration, that is to be given to the contractor. It is supposed to be somewhere around twenty six acres of land. And like I stated, it is under review, so I am not able to give an emphatic statement. Again, when it comes to the horizontal developments, the arrangement is that the contractor will be given twenty acres. This one is also under review. There is A D C, that is the Africa Development Company, which is supposed to create or construct the the IT infrastructure. That one is five point six acres, but there is a bit of snag. And for that matter, we are unable to state emphatically because the second tranche of whatever is promised by way of consideration has not yet been done and others. And so I wouldn't be able to give you, there is after secretariat, but considerations have not been able to pass on between us and them and they to us. So we can't really be specific on those things. But I can assure you that about ninety percent of the the land, more or less, are into some kind of agreement. And that is what I can say for now.
What's the total acres or land size?
All right, so Honorable Chair, respectfully, the entirety of the land currently is supposed to be hundred and eight point five acres.
So my.
It is supposed to?
Yes, because there is, Honorable Chair, there is a problem. Originally, according to E I ten nineteen sixty seven, two hundred and thirty six acres was acquired by the the government of Ghana. And some parts of the parcels were succeeded to the La Pam Royal Beach Hotel and that of Beach Hotels. So it was supposed to be led with about one hundred and fifty six. And about forty six acres by way of some conventions that we do not seem to understand and which we have we have petitioned. The powers that be has been given to Africa Lake Amusement Park. And looking at the original situation, we we think that when such would be revented to the trade fair, would be able to make good use of it. So that would account for about forty six out of the total. And again, there are few.
Please hold on. That will accounts for forty six out of the hundred and eight?
No, that is outside, yeah. But currently, what we can say on authority as drafted is hundred and eight point five acres. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The exhibitions you have been organizing outside and paying for it, are we, were we making profit or loss?
Honorable, honestly, we don't make profit. I would say that we usually break in. That is what we strive to do. Because. Because renting the venue alone, it costs to us. And you see, we also have this government mentality. When you try to raise the exhibition registration fee, the exhibitors are like, you are a government institution. Government, we are supposed to support trade and that. And because we are also into support S M Es, sometimes we have, we try to give discounts to the groups so that at least we will have them also coming to promote trade. So we don't actually make profit as we should or as we are expected to.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, before you, we disengage them, the C E O. So I want you to share with us your vision for the Ghana Trade Fair Authority in a year or two to come.
Respectfully, Honorable Chair, please, I'm the Deputy C E O. The C E O is on the national assignment. And so once the question is addressed to the C E O, I pray that when she comes, we are able to.
Unfortunately, since you decided to take, since you decided to take that responsibility on yourself, we need to, that is why we always say we want the head. If you are not in a position to give us policy on the way forward, then we don't see why you're here.
My lady. Honorable Chair, it would be unfair for me to state that I do not know our policy direction. But respectfully, you indicated that you were addressing the question to a C E O and so.
Yeah, because you are here in that capacity, even though you are.
My lady, I'm here as a Deputy C E O to support.
Yes, but all the questions that were asked of you was to the C E O.
My lady, thank you very much. Honorable Chair, thank you very much. Let me quickly state that when it comes to policy direction, from next January, you are going to see a better Ghana International Trade Fair so far as our mandate is concerned. We are going to augment our, our policies. We are going to augment our trade fair activities. What we met, we are going to make sure that, in fact, we put in policy in place to make sure that our revenues would, you know, come in the necessary inflows. And then we also make sure that there wouldn't be only local or national assignments so far as exhibitions are concerned. We are also looking at international ones so that we are able to take Ghana to the next level. This I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. But I'll be grateful if you can tell your C E O that we've had an experience where CEOs from Ghana Trade Fair Authority refused to attend upon Public Accounts Committee. So respectfully, this should be the last time we are pardoning a Deputy C E O and speaking on behalf of the C E O. But next time, we would want to see the C E O himself or herself in the chair. Thank you very much.
Well, I accept that. Thank you.
All right, now let's go to Ghana Standard Authority. And. Yes. And the infraction is on paragraph twelve ninety. And Honorable Frankie Abua will take care of that.
Thank you, Chairman. Ghana Standards Authority. I want to begin by saying that you are not doing bad at all. Total income grew by twenty-four percent. And this mainly as a result of increase in your I G F. So the drive that is producing that effect should be continued. What is not too good in terms of, in terms of your financial performance is the fact that there's a marginal decline in your surplus. In twenty twenty-two, you produce a surplus of twenty-eight million. But in twenty twenty-three, it, it, it got, it came down to twenty, came down to twenty-six million. And this is mainly due to increase in employees' compensation. I don't remember government increasing employees' compensation by thirty-three percent. So I don't know whether you employed new staff or what. What accounted for the huge increase of thirty-three percent in employees' compensation?
Honorable Chair, the increase was due to government giving a clearance to employ one hundred and seventy-three staff. So that created the employee compensation going up.
As I said, you're not, you're not doing bad, so I'm not going to bother you so much. So let's move to your financial position. Your non-current assets grew by twenty percent. And this is mainly due to acquisition of additional property, plants and equipment. I'm hoping that whatever you acquired will be put into good use to generate more returns for the authority. Your non, your current assets grew by fifty percent. And this is mainly due to cash and cash equivalents. And this reflected positively on your current ratio, which moved from five, five is five to one in twenty twenty-two to twelve point one to one in twenty twenty-three. So it means that you have enough cash or enough current asset to meet your short-term liabilities. So I just want to say that you're doing well, so keep it up. It's a good sign. With that, with that, Chairman, I don't have much to say. They are, they are doing well.
All right, the next infraction is on, no, this wasn't an infraction. This is a financial statement. But then the next one is, which is an infraction, is on paragraph two ninety-nine. And Honorable Jeffrey Kenny will take care of that.
Thank you, Chair. This infraction has to do with unretired impressed. Unretired impressed. An amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand and fifty-three Ghana CDs was released to two of your employees as impressed. This amount was not supported by any document like a spreadsheet, sorry, signed sheets or receipts. So it was difficult for the auditorium to interpret the usage of the money. Due to that, they directed that the said amount be recovered and paid into government chests. I want to ask whether the money has been fully recovered.
Honorable Chair, the monies have been recovered. And we've given the audit service a copy of the signed sheet and statement of accounts.
Auditorium, can you confirm from your outfit?
Honorable Chair, they provided documents to support an amount of hundred and twenty-two thousand and ninety-two point five-five. Then the balance of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty was refunded. Thank you.
So what happens to, or has it been the practice that monies from your outfit can be released without any supportive documents?
Honorable Chair, before the monies will be released, statements on how the money will be spent is attached. So when the officer finished the assignment that had been given to him or her, it brings the statement of accounts and the remaining balance is paid into the authority's account. So that is how it's done. All right, the next one is on paragraph thirteen oh four. And Honorable Alexander Hotaja.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this has to do with avoidable overseas travel costs of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine Ghana CDs. The auditors realized that an officer should go to Burkina Faso and Democratic Republic of Congo did not have visa. Hence, the authority had to pay an extra cost of eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-two CDs to reach his flight. In addition to that, they also realized that the leader of the delegation to Abu Dhabi did not use the ticket purchased for him by the authority due to the nonavailability of a troubled visa. He later submitted a claim to the authority and was paid a refund of sixty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, made up of forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-seven flight costs and thirteen thousand three hundred hiring of vehicle from Dubai to Abu Dhabi and back. The above situation resulted in unnecessary additional cost of seventy-three thousand. They are recommending that, that money of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine be paid back to government chests. How far have you gone with that?
Honorable Chair, the seventy-three thousand eight and zero is made of two different people. One of the officer was sent out to go and work, do calibration work in Burkina Faso and D R Congo. When he got to Burkina Faso and finished his work, he was supposed to move from there to D R Congo. But the application that was made for the visa was unsuccessful. So we've discussed with the travel agent. They suggested that for us not to incur more costs, we have to let the officer come back to Ghana and obtain the visa and move. So in all that particular issue, the Burkina Faso to Accra cost of five thousand four hundred and fifty-six. And from Accra to D R Congo at the cost of forty-seven thousand, four thousand seven hundred and sixty. So that makes the total amount of eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-two is the cost of the airfare to Burkina Faso and Democratic Republic of Congo. The authority pay only the difference of nine six six for the reschedule of the flight. The other one, which was the delegation, the one who led the delegation to Abu Dhabi, could not use the ticket. And therefore, the authority who bought the ticket on credit did not pay for that amount, which is the eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one. Later, he had his agent to buy him the ticket. And the travel between Abu Dhabi and Dubai cost him thirteen thousand three hundred, making the air ticket plus the thirteen thousand sixty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, which was refunded to the delegation leader to Abu Dhabi. So that was the, so it's in twofolds. So that is the situation on the ground.
I don't understand it is in twofolds. So does it mean there was nothing fishy about the whole thing? Is that what you claim?
Honorable Chair, there is nothing fishy about.
So was this an explain to the auditors? Auditors. Auditors, what was your view about it?
Honorable Chair, during the audit, that wasn't made clear. So hence, the observation was raised. Now, when the team visited them, they provided documents to support the fact that there has not been any cost incurred by the entity. And so as far as we are concerned, that issue has been resolved, yes.
Chairman.
My question is, when the auditors came there, how come you couldn't give this information to them at the time of the audit? Honorable Chair, the auditors saw the documents because it's the same documents that we gave to audit service. And there are attachments to the documents. So if they have read it well, they will understand. Wait a minute. If the auditors had read it well, were you there at the time of the audit? Honorable Chair, I was there. Didn't they point out this issue to you during the audit? They pointed out and we tried. And did you explain it well to the auditors? Honorable Chair, we explained, but sometimes the understanding of the auditor and the ones, because sometimes they think there is something fishy that you have done. But then we went further. When these things were happening, we went further to the travel agent to obtain the statements, which shows that there is no double payment because they were thinking that there have been a double payment. So later, when audit service came, we went in for the statement to show that there is nothing like double payment, but it's rather refund that was given to the leader.
She said, at the heart of this thing is administrative negligence. Now, you buy ticket for someone when you have not cross-checked whether or not the person has a valid visa. I mean, this does not work anywhere. So because the person is traveling, you paid for the ticket even before the visa is issued. Is that a practice at your end?
Honorable Chair, this statement that was made by the auditors of seventy-three is in twofolds. One for the officer to work in Burkina Faso and D R Congo. Upon buying the ticket, you realize that when you look at the attachment, you realize that you see nine six six there. The visa was not successful. That is why we spoke to the.
No, sir, sir, please. You buy ticket before visa application. Is that what you do at Ghana Standard Authority?
Honorable Chair, no, please.
So why did this happen? I mean, pure negligence? It's not about the nine hundred and, you seem to be belittling nine hundred and near thousand CDs. That is not our concern. It could be nine, nine hundred CDs, it could be thousand CDs, tomorrow it can be hundred thousand CDs. So it's about the checks, the system that you have in place, that somebody wants to travel. You, you do not have, do you have a protocol department that does your visa and ticketing issues and all of that?
Honorable Chair, please, yes.
And they did not cross-check whether or not the person involved has a valid visa before issuing at the ticket? Is that what happened?
Honorable Chair, I think they assume.
You do not assume in this instance?
That is why they issued.
What, what is the current status? What is the current arrangement at your end?
Current arrangement, visa before ticketing.
Visa before ticketing?
Yes.
So you are assuring this committee, please, this is lie to you. You are assuring this committee and the entire country that Ghana Standard Authority will not see such an infraction again. Is that the case?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
So we take you by your word?
Yes, Honorable.
Because, I mean, it doesn't sound sweet. You sit here and there are nine hundred and, it's not the nine hundred. We don't care. I'm sure nine hundred you can pay from your pocket. But it's about the lapses in the system and it ought to be corrected. You need to tighten the, you don't just issue ticket without visa. It doesn't work anywhere, sir.
Sir, you said something that you bought a ticket for somebody to go to Abu Dhabi and they couldn't use the ticket or they couldn't go. Why? Honorable Chair, the person involved is a minister. So it was assumed that with his diplomatic passport, he can travel to Abu Dhabi without any cost. But then, when he got there, he have an issue because some of the airline doesn't take some of the diplomatic passports, so without visa. So unless you get a visa, you cannot fly on that particular airline. And that was the issue with this particular one. So why, why was that the fault of the auditors? Why was it the fault of the auditors? That you would say that if they had read it properly? You see, there, there's a document attached with the reason why this, but that have been something. Sir, if I were you, I wouldn't go to that tangent because the auditors will keep on coming to your place. And you are belittling them on national television. They will come and see you again. Honorable Chair, I withdraw. Oh. Now you've withdrawn it? Yes. Yes.
Let me go deeper into it. Okay, now let me call Ghana Supply Company. Ghana Sup-, uh, Standard Authority, uh, madam would want to ask you a question.
It's, uh, it's about, is it your lab? The lab or is there a lab, a facility that you have there to test, um, some complicated? Yeah, how, how, how is, how is it, um, functioning?
Honorable Chair.
It saved someone, I knew, that's why I'm asking, how is it functioning? Is it, and does it need help? If there's anything we can do to make sure, I mean, it's up and running properly like it's supposed to do because like I said, it saved someone. And so that's why I'm asking, how is it, um, functioning? What is it that you feel, um, government can do, um, public accounts can do through government to make sure adequate budgetary allocations are made so that it will continuously serve, continuously serve the purpose for which it is there?
Honorable Chair, our labs are working very well. Uh, our only problem is, uh, more money to modernize them. But currently, they serve their purpose. We are delivering the services as required by the public and government. Thank you.
Just, I want to ask, uh, based on diplomatic passport, so in your outfit, anybody, anybody holding diplomatic passport wanted to travel, don't you inquire whether that country accept diplomatic passport or not before they embark on the journey? Honorable Chair, we do. That's the, the outfit of the procurement unit, that's that. But I don't know what happened actually in that particular situation.
Yes, are you going to put in place not to reoccur these issues again?
So we've noted, Honorable Chair, we've noted with concern. So we are not going to allow that. That's why now even a day before you travel, before we buy the ticket for you. Because we should make sure that everything is intact.
Okay, now Ghana Supply Company Limited, you are here, right?
Honorable Chair, I'm Ghana Supply Company Limited. It's an agency under Minister of Finance.
Minister of?
Finance.
Finance?
Yes.
All right. Okay, then, uh, in that case, we are done. But hold on for a public interest question from the vice chair.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have two issues. One. I mean, I, I refuse to look at you directly. I'm intimidated. It has to do with, um, some factories that, uh, was built by the ministry under the Ghana Enterprises Agency program. And, um, uh, this, um, enable youth, uh, projects and it's scattered across the country. As we speak, nothing is happening. I mean, for instance, when I take my constituency, I have an enable youth factory in my constituency. In the last one year, we've installed machines and everything, but it is not functioning. What is happening, Minister?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it is not true that nothing is happening to the enabling youth factories. Somewhere in, in April, we advertised to invite the private sector to come and run those existing factories. There are some of them that have been constructed, but the machines have not been fixed. And so we have procured eight machines to fit into eight of those factories. Now, some of the factories which we didn't get the private sector to show interest. That includes the banana factory in your constituency. So I want to use this opportunity to call on the private sector who are interested in running the banana factory in your constituency to show interest and go through the process so that we can have an agreement with them. So we are doing a lot to make sure that those factories are, uh, active and running. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the commitment and everything and, um, the invitation that private firms should come in. Um, so they come to your ministry or where do they go to?
Mr. Chairman, since this is public institution, all those interested parties should come to the ministry.
All right.
And then particularly to the Chief Director's office. And then they will be taken through what they have to do so that they can run those factories.
My other concern has to do with the National After Coordination Office. And, um, this was, um, an office that was set up to promote, um, after in Ghana. I mean, we've seen what they are doing. What is the current status of the office? I mean, because I, I asked this because, I asked this because in the last eight, nine months, workers have not been paid salaries.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing this for the first time. And I want to find out, not to ask you a question, but I just want to know which workers have not been paid. Because as far as, uh, I'm concerned, after this, uh, African project, it is not owned by Ghana government. Ghana government holds the secretaries.
Minister, I'm, I'm not talking about after. I mentioned that the National After Coordination Office, NCO, that is under the Ministry of Trade. So I'm not referring to after, yes.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were, you were talking about after.
So just go and find out because I'm reliably informed that salaries of workers in the last nine months have not been paid and, um, it is not fair. Um, these are families, big persons who. Yes, so Chief Director, I don't know, Chief Noah, are you able to give some information on this?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The NCO office was being run by someone who was on contract. His contract ran out. So there is a senior officer from the ministry who is manning the place. And as far as I know, everybody there is being paid, who has a contract is being paid. And we have other staff on the ministry also in there working.
I don't want to drag this matter. Just go back and, um, do your investigation and you'll know that people are not being paid and people are struggling. Boys say bray. Thank you.
Okay, Minister, you had discharge.
That's not the case, but we'll find out.
All right, you had discharge, Minister. Uh, we call Minister of Transport, please. Uh, Clark, please swear them in.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Such in the committee issue.
Such in the matter issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, introduce yourself and allow your other officers to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Joseph Bukarini Kwe. The Minister for Transport and the Member of Parliament for Saboba constituency. I have with me the directors from the ministry.
My name is Richard Fedele, Director General Administration, Ministry of Transport.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Derek Quatin, Chief Internal Auditor, Minister of Transport.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Julius Nikwekote, Chief Executive Officer, Driver and Vehicle License Authority.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Paul Ampedu, Director of Finance, DVLA.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Nathaniel Amono-Wolson, within the Ministry of Transport, Director of H M R Resources.
Okay, your infraction is just one and is on paragraph twenty-nine-two on earned salaries. And Honorable Kenny will take care of that one, please.
Well, thank you, Chair. This infraction is about an earned salary. Two persons from your outfit, namely Daudu Mutala and John Ajekun Kufua, I presume not the former president. Vacated post between August twenty-twenty-three and December twenty-twenty-three, but were paid salaries totaling eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three point three-nine. The Audit General recommended that the Chief Executive Officer should recover the said amount with interest and same paid into government chest. Fortunately, management responded that they had recovered the amount and were yet to pay into government chest. We are making a follow-up to ascertain whether said amount was paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, please, the said amount was paid, but it was first of all paid wrongfully into the authority's own accounts. Then our attention was drawn to that and we made it, we corrected the mistake and then paid to the Audit General's recovery account, number one zero one, eight three three, one four seven, zero zero, one five. And we have copies of the receipts.
Was it paid with the interest?
No. Um, Mr. Chairman, no, it wasn't paid with the interest.
Why was it not paid with interest?
Mr. Chairman, it was, I think that, that interest aspect later came to our, our, our notice. And by then, they've already informed the two people to pay the said amount. But we, we were making follow-up as, as to where they are so we can make the interest when I got to know about the issue. But we've not been able to get in touch with them as we speak.
So what promise are you giving to the House in terms of payment of the interest?
We will, we will continue to pursue the issue and then we, when we get them, we, we will revert.
Audit General, can you confirm from your outfit?
Honorable Chair, the actual amount of eleven thousand has been recovered.
Do you mean eleven thousand or eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three point three-nine?
I meant eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, um. Um, thank you, Minister. Um, this is a public interest question. I think of late, we've heard a lot in the space of DVLA. Now that the agency under you is here, where they see you, would like to tell, uh, would like him to tell Ghanaians what exactly DVLA wants to do. I think we've, we've heard a lot of talk, uh, we want to see action. What exactly does he want to do? And how will he communicate to the public what he wants to do at the DVLA to make it fit for purpose and also, uh, and modernize it as well in this current, um, age of digitalization? What is he doing? Um, we, we've heard a lot and so we're giving him the opportunity to tell the people of Ghana what exactly DVLA is doing and his vision as a CEO, um, of DVLA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The authority DVLA is mandated to do driver and vehicle registration. Not just that, but to make sure one goes through the process to get these, um, requirements done. One getting into office, I realize accessibility is a problem. So far, we have been able to open six offices to help people have.
When you say accessibility, um, what, what do you?
Let me, let me give you example. You stay in a place like Suedru. You want to renew your license, which is around seventy to eighty Ghana cities. Now you must pick, you must move from Suedru to Elmina, sorry, to Winiba or to Waja to have this service delivered to you. It's, it tells you that, that's why people have access, that's why people take advantage of the system and engage in all manner of guruboyes. But where, when our offices are located, at least in every region or at least they are accessible to where the magnitude of cars are huge, it helps to bring these issues down.
How many offices do you have currently?
Currently, we, we had thirty-four and we've added six, we've added six to it in a space of ten months. Tomorrow, I'm commissioning a new one in Danzuma, so making it seven.
And are they spread across the country?
That is our quest, to spread them across the country. We, we did one in, we did one in Adenta. We did one in Equitia, Equitia, one in Asabankesi. We did another in Bali. We did, uh, one in Bechim and Doma. Uh, we are going to Asenkura, we are going to Nalugu, we are going to.
It is not where you are going to. I want you to tell me what you have done. You said you came to me thirty-four.
Yes, so, so the six is what.
You have added six. So I wanted you to share the six. Equitia, Adenta.
Adenta, Bechim, Doma, uh, Asabankesi, Bali and Adent-, yes.
Okay, okay. So please continue.
Then we also, I also came to the realization that most of the equipments, earth-moving equipments in the country were not registered. So quickly, I had a press conference to inform each and every agency that deals with health, earth-moving equipments to also come to us, then also register their earth-moving equipments. Then we also had compliance guys to go on the field to also check them. That, I don't have the figure exactly in, in as of today, but the last time I checked, we did over six thousand registration of earth-moving equipment as human office. We also registered some at the port of entry because of the fight against Galamsi, we, we, we didn't write. Now, because most of them were not registered in the system, when they are being caught, you don't have any information about the machine, who brought it to Ghana, who registered it. So we made it a point to begin with the registration of earth-moving equipment right at the port of entry. And that we've also done over four thousand over there. Now, we've also, we also did what we call the community. Now, we've also, we also did what we call the community engagement program. Where we go around communities to also educate people and break that stereotype of DVLA is corrupt, DVLA is this, this. So we can educate drivers, educate the people about what DVLA entails, what we also do. Then we have. So far, we have also done what we, um, we are also having a foreign policy with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Where DVLA will be located in most of the embassies outside Ghana. If anyone here gives you a, a, a passport picture and tells you that, give, get me driver's license. That license that will produce for you is fake because we need your biometric details to be able to produce you with a driver's license. But they are not here. So most of the licenses they have outside there is not really correct, it's not correct. But we can give our, our, our software out to foreign countries to victimize our own. So we deemed it fit to go there with the, uh, help of Foreign Affairs to do the corrections for them. That is the policy we are also embarking on. Then, what policy again? Then we are also changing the number plate. Before that, let me speak about our international biometric system. We were not able to meet ISO specifications when it comes to issuance of license, international license and issuance of vehicle licenses. Because it's just an, it's just handwritten, which is not accepted by most, uh, countries. We procured machines, gotten the design to be accepted by ISO so we can do proper international, uh, biometric page for our clients from twenty twenty-six. Then the new number plate, the current number plate we have is not scannable. So anyone just brings a car, not pay duty, go out there to the streets, get a, uh, the boys by the roadside to emboss a number plate for them. And we want to end that era where people just get up and they not pay duty, just pick a, 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 a number. What they do is that they go through the police station, they go by the police station. When they see cars involved in accidents, then they put their number, number plate on, they go and emboss it and put it on. Sometimes with the help of some officers, they have what we call the custom documents, the, um, uh, chassis number. They'll bring the car of the same type, get a place, knock the number, number plate on it. Then you'll be using their, uh, knock the chassis number on it, they'll be using their number plate out there. So we've done research to get to know all these strategies they use. But the one we are going to introduce, one will be, will be, will not be having year of registration. Which tells you that nobody can buy a car or nobody will wait to the next year before registration of a vehicle. Because every vehicle that must be in the system must be, must be a vehicle that will be identified or can easily be identified by DVLA. But with what we had, with some of the vehicles, we are, we are not having information on them. And so we registered the DP stickers at the port, which I'll come to that. So the one we are bringing now is scannable for security information. You wouldn't need DVLA to be in office before we give those security, uh, uh, information out. A police officer will have access to that scannable machine. So in case of anything, they know who the right person is, who they are supposed to hold responsible. Then it's also help to prevent smuggling of cars. Now.
What kind of security details are you going to put?
Now, it's going to be RFID chip embedded. So with the RFID chip embedded, the system is going to remain only with the authority DVLA. With the RFID chip embedded, it will be very difficult for anyone there, those companies out there, which I'm going to deal with them very soon.
CEO, is the details that is going to go on there because they are people's personality. So what kind of details are you going to put on, on, on?
On the, on the, on the number plate?
You said it's going to come with a lot of security details. Now I'm asking that a number plate, let's say, uh, Rankin's number plate. You're saying that it will be equipped with security features such that if the police should scan, they'll know that truly belongs to Rankin.
Yeah.
So what, because in, in, in putting out somebody's security out there, someone, I mean, a bad person can also get hold of that. So that is why I'm asking, what kind of information are you going to put?
Thank you. Thank you Chair. We have data protection laws, so we'll be compliant with that law. Currently, what we have is just going to be the same form, but now in a more, in a digitalized form, not going to be the paper form anymore. So we are not going to move away from this information.
It's not going to have, um, the user's surname on there?
It depends on.
On the number plate?
It depends on what the law says. We'll go by.
You don't tell me it depends on what the law says. You are joining. So you should be able to tell us that the law says A, B, C. I'm asking you a specific question. Is it going to have the user's surname on the, uh, number plate?
We don't put names on number plates.
I ask a specific question. You say, no, we are not going to put, yes.
I was wondering why that question, sorry, but we don't put names on number plates, that's why.
You are wondering why that question?
Because we don't put names on number plates.
What are you telling me? People pay to have their names on number plates. And you sit here as a DVLA boss, you tell me you don't put numbers on number plates? Haven't you seen specialized numbers with people's surnames and personalized names on number plates? Boy, yes or no, please?
Yes.
So why are you telling me you don't put number, names on number plates?
So I can explain that.
Not that you can explain that. Do, you don't expect me to ask you that question? That is what you said. You don't expect me to ask you that question because people do not put their number plate, their names on their number plate. That is a blatant lie. You have people who pay for specialized number plates and they have their. So I'm asking you, you just mentioned that they are, they are going to be security features and I'm asking, is that going to include people's names on that plate? And I said, you don't expect me to ask you that question? Are you not the DVLA boss?
Hello, Honorable Chair. I think he was trying to explain that we have different types of numbers that you can acquire.
Honorable Minister, I understand that. He said, he doesn't expect me to ask him that question because we don't put names on number plates. You are the DVLA boss. This is something that even a one, two, three-year-old would know. That, oh, my father has his, um, number, name, because we have personalized number plates, don't we?
They, they do.
Honorable Minister, don't we have personalized number plates?
Uh, I think he was saying that he expected the question to come at another time.
No, Minister. No, Minister. Minister, I understand you perfectly, but he said he doesn't expect us to, me to ask him that question.
Okay, so, um.
So if he can redraw that, um, statement, that is fine because we have people with number plates out there, personalized number plates out there. So respectfully, we are here on based on questions and inquiries that citizens of Ghana want to know and that is why we are here.
Honorable Chair, respectfully, I withdraw. That was, it's not to say you don't know what you are saying. It is just to say that the normal person who goes out there to do registration, who don't put the name on the number plate. It is out of a, 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 a special, uh, uh, provision that is made. That's where personalized comes in.
So then I asked you a simple question because you said you are going to put in the security features. And so I'm asking, so is that going to include, um, names on? That question should have been, no, that is not what. But you don't expect me to ask you that? Then why are you sitting in the chair as a DVLA CEO?
That's why I, I said, um, I withdraw that statement.
So I'm asking you, share with us some of the security features because to be honest with you, out there, you see a lot on social media that this is how the new number plate is going to be. It is going to include your surname, it's going to include A, B, C, D. So now we have the opportunity, the CEO is sitting before us and we are just asking, is that going to include that? Yes or no? That is all.
So, thank you, Honorable Chair.
I don't think I can come to your office and show you disrespect.
The, the new, the new number plate, there's always a provision for personalized authentication, uh, numbers. When you come and apply for that, certainly it will be given to you. Thank you very much. I want to, I want to also elaborate last on the DP sticker issue, which has to do with the fact that, um, when we got into office or I got into office, the records available to DVLA says that at the end of every month, cars that were being taken from the port or that were being given to us from the port were around thousand eight hundred. But I realized there is something wrong with that because when you check the customs icons, that doesn't really match with what we were supposed to do because every car is supposed to be containing most of what customs gives to us. So I went to the port to speak to them about that, to see some changes. Then the number went to five thousand four hundred in the month of March. I was still not okay with it. So we introduced with the minister and we introduced what we call the DP stickers. The DP stickers now, you know, because the plate, there's no scientific means to check the authenticity of a plate. People just abuse it. Some, some company can bring ten cars. They'll buy just two car, two plates to redraw all the ten cars. But with the DP sticker, it is one time stick-on. You cannot take it off. So that was what we introduced and we started issuing the cars with the DP sticker. And I'm so happy to announce that just the month of September, we were, we were able to do fourteen thousand four hundred DP stickers. So from thousand eight hundred to fourteen thousand four hundred, that is what we, we are able to do now and we are hoping to do more.
Then, um, clearly your revenue is going to go up. If from a thousand eight hundred a month, you are making, you said over ten thousand, fourteen thousand, then your revenue is going to go up. I hope that it will not be like I have seen increase in revenue, so then it should correlate with an increase in operating expenses. And then you mentioned that, um, you came in to inherit thirty-four offices and you have built six in eight months.
Not built, we have commissioned sixteen.
You have commissioned. So these were offices that were, um.
We, we, some, we entered into agreement, PPP agreement, we call it the ultra-centered concept.
The what?
Ultra-centered concept, yes. Others to use their municipal assemblies to open. So we didn't maintain any office on commission and we came to commission it.
Okay. There were offices that were in the pipeline that you've entered into a PPP.
They were not in pipeline with anyone. We entered, we came and brought, they call, they.
They were private, uh, offices. Okay.
The ultra center, that's for Asamankesi and Akweta are ultra centers, but the rest are DVLA. But not that the offices were built and we came to commission it, no. We entered into agreement with, uh, uh, for lease, we went to rent the offices and then we used it.
Then in order to get DVLA offices closer to, I mean, districts, I think you should look into this and see how best you can partner with other private persons or you commission. Now that you are getting in more revenue, you can look to establishing offices closer to, uh, um, these places where you see a lot of vehicles. And I believe, one, it will raise your own revenue and, two, it will also reduce, um, the non-registration of vehicles. So I think this is something you should.
Just this morning, I had a meeting with the Chief Executive Officer of G E A, Ghana Enterprise Agency. And they've, they've pledged their support so we can collaborate with them, giving them their list. And so we are going to sit down to see where we can, uh, rent their, their, their building for, for office operations.
Okay, yes, they have offices in most of the districts. So you are going to partner with them to make sure you do that. I think it's, um, it's a good thing.
Yeah, Chair, my question to the DVLA bosses, um, I've seen in the country, your men are doing some good job where they are doing mobile. You have mobile team that go around for, uh, those who have a spy DVLA, uh, renewal, where they are not able to come to the, uh, and then your team always issue receipt also for them. I would like to find out from you what, uh, technology are you employing for not to physical cash? Because sometimes you may not know, uh, somebody can use your receipt and then collect money and then the revenue will not go into your account. What IT, uh, are you employing to actually, I mean, increase your revenue using that strategy in the country?
Thank you, Mr Chair. We are, we use Ghana.gov through the Ministry of Finance. Then we are also having, we are about to sign onto the cashless system. But you know, it goes through procedures, so we are true, we are, we are, we are almost true with that for, for, for human intervention. So, yes, that is where we are now.
How, where people will just pay and then, and then that's what you are doing?
Yes, that is allowed.
Yes, uh, Chief Logos, um, so your new system, how does that, um, build like one system where DVLA, the police and the insurance are benefiting from it? Um, for instance, I was in South Africa recently and every public place that you enter, the normal security person there has a mobile app where he can check the registration of the vehicle and also check the validity of, of the driver. Um, i- is it that you are building a system where you only reside because, um, like my brother said, uh, now along the line, you see people wearing DVLA and checking number plates and all of that. That system should be available to the police, but it looks like the police have limited access to your information. So the new system, how does that integrate all three? So that the insurance company, the police and also DVLA would have one system, one road traffic information system so that we all benefit.
Thank you very much. We are, we are doing, we are updating the new, the new system we have, that's the vehicle registration system, that's the VRS. We are updating it to meet, um, uh, this demand. But already Traffic Tech is coming on board and Traffic Tech deals with DVLA, Ghana Police and, um, uh, Ghana Insurance Company, National Insurance Company. We have also again signed an agreement with, um, National Insurance Company. So now, before you get a road ready, you must have insurance. People get the road ready and now they dodge the insurance. We've signed onto that, so we are, we are, we'll be doing the implementation very soon. But with the Traffic Tech, DVLA, National, uh, uh, Insurance Commission and the Ghana Police, we are into one thing and we, we do information sharing. So when Traffic Tech is fully rolled out, that collaboration will be there.
In all of this, is it before Parliament?
Oh, yes.
Is it before Parliament?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
One last one. I just want to find out, you mentioned biometric details. So is it going to be a new system of biometric details collection or you're going to use the Ghana card biometric details?
In whatever we do, we always use the, we always verify NIA cards before we do it. And they didn't charge us for that. So we are going to include the, uh, uh, NIA card.
It's not going to be a new system that is going to cost and then you are asking, um, drivers to come and take their biometric details again?
The same NIA details is what we use.
DVLA, you answered more public interest question than your one infraction you came here with. So, uh, Adey, Adey. He's standing between us. So, uh, Minister. Um, the, okay, okay, hold on. What is technical? What, what, how technical is it? Um, Honorable, uh, Honorable CEO, the question is, the question is. Look, let me ask this question so that he can go. About the insurance and then the, uh, roadworthy. Uh, which one comes first? The roadworthy and then the insurance? Which one will come first?
What we do currently is roadworthy first, but we don't need vehicle registration number for insurance. We need the chassis number of the car for insurance.
But Chairman, sorry, we need to know the car is roadworthy before we insure it for you. So how, as an insurer, sitting in my office, how do I know that your car is roadworthy before I do the insurance for you?
They're, they're driven from port cars and then the DV cars, defective vehicles and cars, we don't check them, but yet we issue them with insurance.
That is short period. We are talking about a year cover for insurance.
DV is for one year.
I understand, but it depends on the insurance, but ideally. I understand, but it depends on the insurance, but ideally I must know the car is roadworthy before I insure it. That's, that's a normal practice. That's a normal practice.
Okay.
You may have very good plans for bringing that in, but.
Okay, this is, look, look, this, this is.
The roadworthy must be there before the insurance.
Uh, someone just reminded me that this is not vetting for, for him. But, uh, yeah, I know there are public interest questions, but we'll get him, we'll get him to come, we'll get him to come another time to come and explain to all of us. Uh, the, he has, he's answered enough. Honorable Minister and CEO, you are discharged. Now let's call Ministry of Agriculture.
Chairman, Chairman, oh, the way here, Honorable Chair. We just want to thank you for having us today and, uh, we are ready at any time you want us to come and throw more light on car registration and insurance. We'll make ourselves available. Thank you, Chairman.
Hold on, um, Minister of, um, Agri, there's a low holder, please. Let's clear Ministry of Transport, um, Local Government and then you take over, please. Please give them sworn in.
That's my man.
Uh, okay. Have they, have they been sworn in yet?
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam, could you introduce yourself and your team, please?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Retanodulisowa, Deputy Minister for Local Government, Chief Trans and Religious Affairs. I'm standing in for my honorable minister, Honorable Ahmed Ibrahim. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Delakemevo. I'm the director responsible for general administration at the ministry, holding the fort for the chief director who is in the post. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Eric Banroyele, the financial controller of the Ministry of Local Government, Chief Trans and Religious Affairs. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, my name is Rachel Fusua Sapon, the acting regional coordinating director for Western Region.
Honorable Chair, my name is Kopsin Joseph, the regional director, Public Work Department, Takradi.
Honorable Chair, my name is Mikhail Kojouenchi, uh, regional accountant for PWD, Greater Accra.
Honorable Chair, my name is Emmanuel Kabina Aqua, estate manager, PWD, Takradi.
Honorable Chair, my name is Pechen Skin, accountant, PWD, Takradi.
Okay, um, Minister of Local Government, your first infractions on paragraph seventeen seventy-eight, non-deduction of rent to the tune of seventy-five thousand. What has happened to this amount?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid.
All right, the next infractions on paragraph seventeen eighty-four. And it's on, uh, withheld taxes not remitted, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. What has happened to this amount? Yeah, I'm waiting on the withheld taxes, no remitted to JRE.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The, the last time we appeared here, uh, we indicated it was paid.
You said it was paid?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Can the auditors confirm that, please?
Honorable Chair confirmed.
Thank you. Uh, the next infractions on paragraph seventeen eighty-eight and, uh, Honorable Kusip Kenedu will take hand of that.
Chairman, thank you very much. This has to do with an unearned salary for one Madame Gloria Demedeme. Uh, she was granted a steady leave to the tune of a hundred and three thousand Ghana cedis. And she was supposed to serve a bond. She did not come back. But the auditors also indicates that she's paid an amount of fifty thousand out of that amount of a hundred and three, leaving a balance of fifty-three thousand Ghana cedis, which you ought to recover from her. Has that been done?
Honorable Chair, the money has been paid. Thank you.
The fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four plus the prevailing interest?
Honorable Chair, it has been paid.
And evidence of same shown to the auditors?
Yes, so the auditors can confirm to that or attest to that.
Auditors, can you please confirm that an amount of fifty-three thousand has been recovered with the interest from Madame Gloria?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so in total fifty-eight thousand three hundred and nine was recovered. And Honorable Chair, if I may comment, the local government, issues relating to local, local government have been dealt with in our previous settings. I think what they are here for is the issues regarding the water systems. The, sorry, the PWDs, yes. And water, and water systems, yeah.
Okay, madam, um, it's on the Minister of, um, they listed water and sanitation agencies and, uh, Ministry of Sanitation and Water Resources. But they tell us that all these water systems are under local government. Like, um, Asa Kegwa, uh, Community Water and Sanitation Agency. Is, is that under you?
Honorable Chair, uh, with water is under Ministry of, um, Works and Housing, Water Resources. When you come to, what, what has to do with our ministry is sanitation issues, but water doesn't lie in our ministry. Thank you.
Okay, then we will deal with the sanitation issues.
Chair. Um, please, the letter that we received, it's not about sanitation. Today is about Public Works Department from the Western Region and then Greater Accra Region. That's the letter we received.
Okay, so the, public works what?
Yes, so the letter we received, we have it here.
Madam, the sanitation and water came together. For example, we are talking about uncollected revenue for the Asa Kegwa area. That would be something that Minister of Local Government will answer, right?
Honorable Chair, that will be for Thursday. It's not on, uh, invitation for today.
Madam, your ministry is discharged. Would, would get the clerk and everybody else to get us exactly what needs to be. So if we need to bring water, uh, Ministry of Water and, uh, Water Works or whatever it is, we will bring all of your ministries together on Thursday. You are discharged. Ministry of Agriculture, please. Thank you. Minister of Agri, have you been sworn in yet?
Deputy, deputy, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Uh, Minister, could you please introduce yourself and your team?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is John Dumelo. I'm the MP for Ayawasu Westwagon and also the Deputy Minister for Food and Agriculture.
Good afternoon, Sir Chair. My name is Paul Siame, the acting chief director, Minister of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning. I am Solomon Jananza, the director of crop services, Minister of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Dusei, financial controller, Minister of Finan-, Minister of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Erasmus Anno, the chief treasurer of Saudi Ministry.
Good afternoon, Madame Chair. My name is Emmanuel Aligi Kujoo, the chief virtual officer of the Ministry of Food and Agriculture. Thank you.
Okay, let me start with this on the supplied, um, items to combat antarast, um, diseases. Five point one million. What has happened to this, um? The recommendation was for chief director to ensure that the laboratory equipment items supplied are installed without further delay. What has happened to it?
Thank you, uh, Chairman. The laboratory equipment have been supplied and duly installed at Pont Tamaley and then Bogatanga.
Are the auditors aware of that?
Yes, we have notified them on the, the installation. Yes, we have notified them.
Auditors?
The installation.
Honorable Chair, we indicated in the report that these supplies had been done, but the installation, um, was outstanding at the time. As we speak, we have not inspected the installation. Uh, so with your leave, if that has to be done, we can do that and provide feedback.
Thank you very much. Please follow up with it. Make sure that it is done. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen thirty. Uh, Honorable Nakoyo will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the issue of unretired impressed for foreign travels and other similar activities, a total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight is yet to be retired by your officers contrary to regulations of the PFM Act. Are you aware that this is a breach of the PFM Act?
Honorable Chair, um, the unaccounted for payment of one, one hundred and. Honorable Chair, um, the unaccounted for payment of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight as recommended by the auditor. After reconciliation with the auditors, uh, we discovered that that amount is an error and the amount actually is one five eight four hundred. That is unaccounted for and that money is made up of one hundred thousand that has been accounted for. We have reconciled with them. Fifty thousand has been refunded as recommended and eight thousand four hundred has been also accounted for.
Um, can the Auditor General verify this for us, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, um, an amount, that is, in terms of cash, of fifty thousand refunded. And then the balance of one thirty-eight has been supported with relevant documents.
So can you tell the committee what steps you have taken to enforce the Auditor General's recommendations by sanctions that has been applied to these officers pursuant to section ninety-six and ninety-eight of the P F M Act?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The issue has to do with, um, misplace of PVs and overlap of PV counting in our office. This was due to movement of offices and the officers involved were called in from their transfers and they collaborated with our officers and we onet all this due to reconciliation issues. After that, I've put in place, um, procedures and proper controls to ensure that certain things do not reoccur. Thank you.
Can you please tell the committee the procedures and the proper controls you have put in place? Thank you.
Thank you. The procedures and the processes are put in place include, now all PVs pass through internal audit before payment and after payment, they have to vet it again before external auditors comes in. Secondly, PV register in our office is regularly monthly reconciled to ensure all payment are being accounted for. In addition to that, we invite the internal auditor to do regular internal audit before external audit comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen thirty-four. Honorable Simon will take care of that.
Thank you.
Seventeen thirty-four. Is an unpresented payment voucher.
All right. Um, there is an unpresented payment voucher to the tune of hundred thousand. Um, has that been presented now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, please, that PV has been presented to the external auditors and has been acquainted duly. Thank you.
Um, have you put in place any measures to ensure that we don't have this happening again?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The second infraction has to do with the same as the first one and the total amount is almost the same in the sense that one hundred fifty-eight thousand, hundred thousand is this second infraction and same process and procedures apply to this one as well. Thank you.
Can the auditors confirm if that's been done? Thank you.
Honorable Chair, they have presented their PVs and same verified. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen forty-two. Honorable Agrogue will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the infraction, um, an amount of four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred CDs refunded by contractors who were supposed to have purchased vehicles for the monitoring of warehouses projects lodged into the Mofa accounts instead of the consolidated fund as stated below. Are you also aware that, um, section seven of the Public Financial Management Act two twenty sixteen says that where a principal spending officer receives a subvention on behalf of another entity, that principal spending officer shall remit this subvention into the other entity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The total amount four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred, as recommended by the external auditor, has been fully refunded per the recommendation and the relevant document are available for verification, please.
Thank you. The auditors, can you please confirm this?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the entire amount has been refunded.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph, um, seventeen forty-seven and Dr. Jassa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The infraction relates to misapplication of tractor farm equipment funds. And, um, it was found that between May seventeenth and twenty-second of May twenty twenty-four, you spent an amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand Ghana cedis on ministers' foreign travels and vehicle repairs. You used a tractor equipment fund to do that. Um, can you tell us what happened here and what you have done so far about the directive from the auditors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What happened here was that, um, there was eminent, um, travel by the minister and funds allocated or the minister's account was virtually empty. So we had to manage, um, and borrow money from tractors accounts as rightfully, um, reported by the auditors. And when the auditors came and saw it, they recommended for full refund immediately. Mr. Chair, the full amount has been refunded duly and relevant document are available for inspection. Thank you.
When, auditors, could you confirm if this has been done?
Honorable Chair, so the amount has been refunded back into the tractors' account.
It has been refunded.
It has been refunded.
Okay.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen fifty-one. Honorable Dipal. No, seventeen fifty-one. He, you are the one? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, as part of, that's a, the infraction is unsupported payments amounting to fifty thousand Ghana cedis. So as part of the preparations for the celebration of the twenty twenty-two, uh, Farmers' Day, fifty thousand Ghana cedis was paid to Honorable Yao Adu without the relevant supporting documents to authenticate the payment. Management couldn't also provide a documentary to authenticate the payment as said. So auditors recommended that the Chief Director should recover the amount from the financial controller and pay same to the Auditor General's, uh, recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. Feeling with the Chief Director should pay. Uh, what is the status quo? Has the money been paid?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As recommended by the external auditor, the money has been fully refunded to chase. Relevant document are available for verification. Thank you.
Yes, auditors, can you confirm same?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid into the AG's recoveries account.
All right, uh, the next infraction is on, uh, Human Resource Development and Management Direct Rate. Um, seventeen fifty-four.
It has to do with unpresented, um, payment vouchers of thirty-one thousand. Has it been presented to your Auditor General and can, yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, the payment voucher is available for verification. It has been presented to the external auditors. Thank you.
Auditors, please, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we are here to verify the PVs, whether indeed they have been presented.
When was the presentation done?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, documents in front of me shows that, and the document was sent to external auditors on the fourth of August twenty twenty-five and they signed it here. Copy is here. Thank you.
When you say external auditors, who in particular? The Audit Service?
Auditor General.
Auditor General, okay. Okay, so, um, please follow up and confirm for us so it can be cleared of the books. Thank you.
Well noted, Honorable Chair. I'll follow up and revert.
The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen fifty-eight and it's over payment of service rented for nine thousand five hundred and fourteen. You were to recover this amount. What has happened to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amount as recommended by the external auditors has been refunded. Evidence of payment are available for inspection. Thank you.
Okay, auditors, follow up on that one also. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen sixty-two and it's on earned salary of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. What has happened to this amount? Auditors, uh, I'm sorry, did you confirm?
Yes, I wanted to confirm the earlier infraction that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, the recovery has been done.
It's been done.
Paid into the AG's recoveries account.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, now the second, uh, the question that I ask about the overpayment on paragraph seventeen sixty-two on earned salary, what has happened to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the on earned salary of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty has been fully refunded as recommended by the auditors. Evidence of payment are available for inspection. Thank you.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen sixty-six. Honorable Gape will take care of that one.
Thank you. Um, this is basically about, um, unpaid rent, you know, by the law, ten percent of your salary is supposed to be those who are occupying government Bangalore. And then some of your staff were occupying government Bangalore and then they are not paying. So it's unpaid rent about thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-two. And then in the recommendation, the auditors recommended that it should be paid. What is the status of this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amount thirty-eight thousand has been refunded. Back to you.
Auditors, can you confirm that?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been fully paid.
So, Madam Chair, you see that for this particular one, it's management that failed to do the, to effect the deduction. Now going forward, if you have, if you have recovered this as payment from the beneficiaries, what are you doing as management to ensure that that deduction is always affected and that you don't have to wait and then go back to them to refund?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as rightly said by the, uh, Honorable, the officers occupying government Bangalore are supposed to have their ten percent deducted at source from Control Accountant General and same pay to government. Um, we have submitted their details for deductions and the dates per the auditors' recommendation, they calculated to a certain date. From that date onwards has been submitted to Control Accountant General for deduction. So henceforth, such may not recur for these people. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen seventy-two and Nasee will take care of that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Payment of on earned salary, financial controller, I'd like to find out from you whether this amount has been paid to the Auditor General's account with the interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The on earned salary of ninety-one thousand thirty-four Ghana cedis, thirty-seven peswes have been fully paid back to government chest. The interest.
No, no, you're on the wrong, seventeen seventy-two.
It's on, it's on National Premix, who was secretary. Is, 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 is that you? Is it, does it fall under?
No, no, that's.
Okay.
That one is different.
So that should go to Fishers then, then.
Is, is Fishers not under Ministry of Agriculture?
No, it's a different ministry.
Oh, is the, um, the new minister?
Yes, please. Okay, Nasee, then, uh, rather go to paragraph seventeen seventy-six. That's where the ninety-one thousand is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Financial Controller, this was also another on earned salary of ninety-one thousand and thirty-four. Please, I'd like to find out whether the amount has been paid with interest as the auditors said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As recommended by the auditors, the total amount of ninety-one thousand thirty-four Ghana cedis and interest of twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven has been paid back to Auditor's Recovery Account. Thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm for us?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the payment has been done, inclusive of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Minister of Agriculture, we are done. And, uh, thank you very much for coming to the conference. You have a question to add, public interest question? Should I allow that? Okay, I will allow that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Honorable Minister, um, I hear a lot on the famous in Koko in Kiting Kete. Can you please tell this committee what's in Koko Kete Kete is about? Thank you.
Well, uh, thank you so much. Um, thank you so much, Madam Chair. The Koko Kete is a policy which was in. The Koko Kiti Kiti is a policy which was in manifesto, the NDC manifesto, to be able to help reduce the importation of poultry products. Currently, as we speak, we import what we consume in Ghana, we import over eighty-five percent of it. And so what we are trying to do at this point is to distribute three million day-old chicks to households across the country so that we ourselves can be our poultry farmers and then we can develop interest in the poultry industry. Hopefully, once this is done regularly, we will be able to reduce the importation of poultry products by about thirty or forty percent in the next few years. And that would obviously positively impact our forex market. So every constituency is, it will be given ten thousand beds. Now, if you break it down, that means every household will be given about fifty day-old chicks, including feed.
Did you say household?
Households.
Every household in every constituency?
Every household.
In every constituency?
Two hundred households, two hundred.
Uh-huh. Yes, you are now talking.
I don't want trouble with you, Madam Chair.
Because you said, you said every household.
Sorry.
Yes.
Two hundred households in every constituency would be given fifty beds.
I'm giving the opportunity to correct yourself because next year, when you come here, who assess that? That's why I'm asking you. Did you say every household?
Every, two hundred households.
Thank you.
In every constituency will be given fifty day-old chicks, including feed. And that would commence pretty soon.
Is it the constituency or the district?
Constituency.
Constituency?
Yes, please.
Well, so, so we appreciate the fact that this is a program that started in the elsewhere administration and that it's been rebranded into Koko Kiti Kiti. And but, please, your vice chairman is on the floor and you are making noise. This is, this is serious. So what is it that you are doing differently from the previous one? Because I know that the previous one, you were supplying this day-old chicks to, and what level of training are you giving to the households? So that it becomes commercialized and it doesn't turn into people's soup in the household? Because fifty day-old chicks to two hundred households, the way I love chicken in my house, I may not commercialize it, but it will end up in the pot. So please, what is it that you are doing so that you commercialize the Koko Kiti Kiti and the whole nation stands to benefit? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, interestingly enough, we didn't hear much about your policy in the previous administration. And so a lot of people didn't benefit. But with this one, we are being as open and transparent as we can. And we are channeling it through the right agencies. What we don't want is a lot of mortalities in that we want to train those who are going to receive the day-old chicks to be able to have adequate training so that they can be able to raise the chicks, the broilers, to be six weeks, eight weeks. And then thereafter, you know, they can slaughter it or, you know, the the relevant agencies will come and buy it from them. And so we are putting in place measures. We want this policy to be very successful because indeed it is a national policy. And so far, it's generated a lot of interest. And we hope that very soon we will stop the importation of our poultry products. And so we are ensuring that things will go on well and go on right.
Thank you, Farmer John. And first of all, I thank you for confirming that there's a project that started in the elsewhere, but it wasn't that large and it wasn't really announced. Two, and also the measures that you are putting in place
Yes.
to ensure that what started in Akufado's era will be sustained in Jamame's era. I mean, governance is continuous.
I mean, this time, it's been bigger and better.
But when are you starting the project? When are you starting the program?
I don't want to give a specific date so that I'll be caught unawares. But it's going to start, it's going to start in November, sometime in November.
Thank you, Farmer John, for the confirmation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just let you know, you said you don't know when it's going to start, but somewhere in November.
Yes, please.
You know, in the operation of the budget reallocation.
Yes, please.
If the funds are not utilized in this particular year, you know what it is?
Yes, please, we are well aware.
So then if by November, usually after the budget, nothing really happens.
Yes, please.
And so that if you sit here and tell us that by November
Yes, please.
and we have just two months or less to end the year after November,
Yes, please.
and then you should know what you are talking about.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Minister and your team, you are discharged.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other agency that I haven't called?
Memes, we are still on set. Ministry of Agri can leave us, but on this, on this, on this, we are still on set, that's what I said. Yeah, yeah. We are, we are being carried live. We'd like to thank all the audities. We'd like to thank all the audities who attended upon us today. We look forward to beginning properly the reports of the Auditor General on the public boards of Ghana, public boards, public accounts of Ghana, public boards, corporations and other statutory institutions for the period ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-four. These are the public agencies of governments. And we have Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. Under Ministry of Energy and Green Transition, we have Electricity Company of Ghana. We have Bulk Oil Storage and Transport, that's BOST. We have Valco Trust, we have Ghana National Petroleum Corporation, GMPC. We have Way Power Authority, we have National Petroleum Authority, NPA, Energy Commission, Energy Fund, Unified Petroleum Price Fund, Ghana Grid Company Limited, that's Gridco. We have the National Education Scheme, the Ghana Atomic Energy Commission, as well as the Volta River Authority, VRA Health Services Limited. So under, all these agencies are under, all these public boards, sorry, under Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. Then we also look at Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Creative Arts. Under that, we have Ghana Tourism Authority and the Tourism Development Fund. So these are the agencies, ministries and public boards that we're going to look at tomorrow, God willing. Thank you very much, JTV and the other team. We are grateful to you for all the support you continue to give to us. Thank you.